Good evening, everyone. I'm going to reconvene the January 8th Board of Supervisor meeting at this time. We did not have a closed session, so we can move right into the first, well, the only, public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Let me provide a bit of an introduction, and then you can move on to hear from the public. This topic, the board regarding contractors' yards and the special requirements, special standards included in the county zoning ordinance was discussed by the board early, earlier this year in June. The board reviewed a draft, held a public hearing with the Planning Commission on that draft, and ultimately decided not to adopt that amendment at that time. The matter was referred back to the Planning Commission, who worked on it, refined the concept with input from the board, and very recently, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the revised draft that has been attached to this meeting agenda item and available in my office for review that continues to have similar modifications to the earlier version, but narrows the changes some, and I'll go through those in just a minute. Essentially, the county has two types of contracting business as an allowed use in the zoning ordinance. One is a small contracting business on the same lot as a residence. That's a residential use, relatively limited in scope and number of vehicles and amount of area and things like that that can be used. The other is a contractor's office shop yard, which is a commercial use, also is allowed in non-commercial areas, and in those non-commercial areas, it must be a special exception. So for that special exception, heretofore, there had been no established special standards like there were for small contracting business. So this ordinance amendment is to provide and include special standards for the commercial use. Allow me to pull up the change, proposed change, if you will. First, is similar to when the board discussed this in June, there are changes in the definitions for automobile, graveyard, junkyard, junk to track state code. This is important to make sure we're differentiating between contractors' yards and junkyards Regarding where this use can go, there is a change for the commercial version, the contractor's office shop yard, in that this ordinance amendment would not allow them to go into the conservation zoning district, whereas before, they would have been allowed by special exception in the conservation zoning district. Then for the use itself, these enumerated special requirements would be applied to a contractor's office shop yard, in addition to any reasonable conditions the board might put in place after holding a public hearing. And those are: the minimum lot size shall be 10 acres; the minimum yard requirements shall be 200, minimum yard requirements shall be 250 feet on the front, side, and rear. That's essentially a setback. All materials, goods, supplies, parts, vehicles, pieces, equipment stored or found on the site must be limited to things that are customarily used in the contractor's ordinary course of business. There's been some discussion regarding that item, and county attorneys suggest perhaps to insert the wording "in outdoor storage," where it says, "All material, goods, supplies, parts, vehicles, pieces of equipment stored or found on the site in outdoor storage must be limited to things." So if you put the items in your building, then it's less important what they are. All material, goods, parts, supplies stored or found in the site must be fit for their intended uses. No junk or inoperable vehicles or inoperable equipment may be stored on the site. The combination of vehicles and pieces of equipment stored on the site must be appropriate for the particular site when considering their type and number. That's a matter for the board to discuss with the applicant and the particular site as conditions may be appropriate. And then there's a definition of what a piece of equipment means. All parking, loading, or open storage shall be effectively screened from the view of public rights away and neighboring properties. And so this, again, is subjective and allows the applicant and the board to review the particular site and discuss what appropriate is for that site. The total area covered by outdoor storage in connection with this use shall not exceed 20,000 square feet. At this point, I'll refer to the note that the Planning Commission made, and they thought perhaps there would be confusion using the word "covered by" while also talking about covered storage, and so they suggested "used for." So the total area used for outdoor storage in connection with this use shall not exceed 20,000 square feet. Upon the request of the administrator or commission, that'd be the zoning administrator or Planning Commission, applications shall include a light, noise, dust, vermin, fume, smoke, and odorous mitigation plan, as well as plans for onsite fire suppression and onsite chemical spills emergency mitigation plan. Depending on the type of use and the application that comes in, that's a discussion that can happen between the board and the applicant. The total area used for, all structures used in connection with such a use shall not exceed 10,000 square feet. The site shall not be open to the public or customers unless authorized, authorizing special exceptions, the authorizing special exception specifically deems their access to be acceptable due to mitigating factors put in place by the use. Upon request of the administrator, commission applications shall include a traffic management plan indicating the number types of vehicles normally using the site and describing the existing road geometry, including surface treatment, width, and horizontal and vertical curves along the traveled route between the site and the nearest primary highway. No specific requirements, but the applicant must come to you and explain how their site and their location and the road network leading to that site is appropriate for the vehicles that they'll be using. Proposed vehicular entrances to the public roadway shall be adequate to accommodate the vehicles normally using them and shall be sufficient design and size so as not to impede the traveling public. Roads leading from the public road into the site must be sufficient width and sufficient geometry to allow two vehicles normally using the road to pass. So not only must the entrance be acceptable, once a vehicle leaves the entrance, it must be able to make its way into the site and not back vehicles out onto the roadway. And then lastly, the applicant shall provide proof of valid contractor's license as required by the state, DEPOR. So if they're going to have a contractor's office shop yard, they need to be a contractor. Normally, I don't read all of the sections, but this has been somewhat of a lengthy process, and so I thought it was important to make sure we all knew what we were talking about. Pause there if there's any questions, comments, before you hear from the public. I should say, this was properly advertised in the newspaper twice, and as I said, the document's been available for inspection at my office.
I just had a quick question about...
Thank you.
...heeding your reminder. You mentioned in passing, I think it's an important point, we do see a lot of residential-scale contractors' yards. I can think of a number of examples. So just to confirm that, that is a by right use as it's defined? Before we get into the special exception question, just thinking of tiers of...
Yeah, no.
Because I don't want to, the key is to not go down a path of putting people out of business where, especially right now with snow and road supply, people need to have businesses with equipment.
Yeah, and so this ordinance amendment does not touch, so to say, the small contracting business? It is, it does require a special exception in ag, RR5, R2, RV, and commercial village. It's by right in the same districts as the larger one, commercial, general, highway, commercial, and industrial.
Okay.
That's something the board could look at in the future.
So I guess what I was asking is, there's no pre-existing, there's no pre-existing ordinance provision for sort of that residential scale size that's now being pulled into the special exception, but rather, we're just bifurcating the definitions within the special exception itself, right?
Well, and it's been bifurcated till now. There just were no guardrails on the larger type. And so you're putting some limits on the larger type so that a multi-acre sheet of asphalt with hundreds of pieces of equipment could not happen in Rappahannock County in the future because it's limited to 20,000 square feet of outside storage.
Okay, and then one question raised by a citizen and some written comments that we received went to, went to the idea that there are existing, in particular, I would say, residential scale or on homeowner property-type contractor yards in existence already. Presumably, the effective date of any ordinance adopted here would be only prospective, correct?
That is correct.
It can only be prospective.
Yeah, so there's, as you can imagine, there's a continuum of uses that might range from a homeowner bringing home the company vehicle one day a month...
Right.
...to having this contractor's yard, which is a much more intense use. And on the far light intensity end of the spectrum, it's probably a reasonable accessory use for the principal use of the residence, right? And then as it gets more intense, then you begin to get into permitting and restrictions on what you can do. And then, to answer your question, there certainly are uses in the county that predate the zoning ordinance, and, of course, they're vested, as some would say grandfather.
Okay, and then finally, the guardrails, or just call it the parameters for these two different categories of contractor's yards, by virtue of the fact that these are subject to Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors' review as special exception permit applications. I believe from our last discussion that within those parameters or limits, whether it's number of vehicles or some of the other numeric parameters, there's always plus or minus and wiggle room at the discretion of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors if the applicant were to make a case for small adjustments to certain of those requirements, correct?
In the ordinance, as it's written now, there are ceilings for both the small contractors...
That's important.
...and for the contractor's yard, the commercial version. And so the 20,000 outdoor storage and the 10,000...
Those are limits.
Buildings, those are limits.
Yep, okay.
Other places, the board, through iterative discussion, decided to have more subjective language.
Yeah.
Because if one of these pops up in the middle of a 1,000-acre parcel, then the right number of vehicles is different than if it's right next to a whole town.
That's more of what I was getting at, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the contractor yard discussion only. If you would like to speak, please be recognized and give us your name and the district you live in.
You know I have to say something. John Capioli Hampton District. This new addition to this, about 20,000 square feet being the cap, is that a cap at the minimum of 10 acres? Or, as Mr. Whitson just pointed out, if it's 1,000 acres, can it be larger? Is it scaled to the acreage, the total acreage? That's not very clear. As Mr. Al Henry said once upon a time, I know people that have gardens that are 20,000 square feet. So I'd like to have that in this ordinance as a scale to the property, because 20,000 square feet of outside storage is nothing. If I try to take a couple of tractor-trailers and turn them around, I'm going to run across 20,000 square feet. Other than that, I think we're headed on the right track.
Thank you.
Run back to McCalla Jackson District to extend on the comments that I made earlier today. Right now, I want to deal with the fact that what has kind of precipitated the need for this? And I think in talking to my supervisor, whatever, and some other individuals, it's a visual thing, that people don't want to be able to look out their window and see what, you know, they may, you know, they consider junk, the contractor, that's how he makes his business. But I think that is really the root of the whole problem. I don't think it's the numbers, and it's not necessarily the size, it's just the visual. And to deal with this, using that aspect, it's all about buffers. And the fact that if you want to, you know, if you want to have a contractor's yard, yes, you can have a contractor's yard, but you're going to have to put in visual buffers so that your neighbors can't see it, and the size can vary. I mean, as long as it's, you know, and I'm thinking, Leyland cypress are, you know, you could even require that because they are great buffers. They grow fast, they're very heavy, they grow tall, and that, I think, for most people would satisfy their objections to these things. Because it's, you know, there's, whether you have five vehicles or 10 vehicles or whatever, you know, there's going to be activity in them certain times of the day or whatever, and that's, you know, but that's, a lot of this is agricultural, probably most of it's agricultural. Farmers have lots of equipment, and that's another issue also on this, is that farmers can have as many pieces of equipment as they want, but if you want to do a contractor's yard at agricultural property, those numbers are limited. And so these are things we want to look at, but why, you know, you've got all these, all these items in there, there are, a lot of them are going to be very difficult to enforce. I thank the county attorney for realizing that it's not a good idea, you know, try to control what people use inside a building. But even then, I mean, there's, motorized equipment can be, these days, a motor is gas or it's electric. And this contractor could be a yard, you know, yard maintenance or whatever, and he may have, he's got a good business. He may have six or eight mowers, he'll have trimmers, all these things that, you know, they have motors, and so they end up being considered as motorized equipment if you look up the definition on what equipment is. So I think what would work better, because we've already got the process, and we've been using it for years, and as I said earlier, it hasn't been used that much, and we have lots of contractor's yards that are permitted, but just dumb it down to the fact that, you know, if you're going to have outside storage, it's going to have to be buffered. Because a building, in most of those situations, is going to be basically a Wagner-type barn or something like that, which is no different than what the agricultural property has right next door. So what the building looks like is not really relevant, but it's the equipment. It's, you know, one man's, you know, heart is not the man's junk or whatever, or as far as equipment goes. But that, you know, I think is the crux of it, and I go way beyond with all these things that are going to be, you're not going to be able to enforce them. I mean, you know, to have to go onto a property and start, you know, counting vehicles and go, okay, start this one, start that one, all this kind of stuff, it's not worth the county's time. So just require the person that's doing it, shield it, and there probably won't be any problems. We haven't really had any problems in the past, other than the visual, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marlena Lee, Jackson District. So maybe this isn't the right place to ask this question, but can somebody educate me on what a proffer is? Isn't that something that somebody proffers to give so that they can get what they want on a special exception?
This is a public hearing.
Okay.
We can answer that later.
Okay. So if we in our contractor's yard ordinance don't have road standards that are specified, don't have a lot of standards that are specified, a contractor's yard could end up legally on a 16-foot right-of-way, down my right-of-way, if someone were to buy a piece of property that's over 10 acres, which is outrageous. If you're going to have a use in an agricultural district, in my opinion, you should at least meet the minimum lot size for that district. You're already using that land more intensively because you're on a 10-acre lot, and I'm on a 2-acre lot, and I have an 8-acre lot, and I have another 2-acre lot. So those lots are already being used more intensively. So 10 acres is way too small in my lot, in my opinion, for this type of contractor's yard. I'm not referring to the residential contractor yard. They've been there for years, they don't bother anybody, they don't have heavy equipment coming and going all hours of the day that I can't stop, I can't make them do anything differently. And it's my understanding, I had a family apartment 30 years ago on the old piece of property that I used to have, and I was told that anything that wasn't in the ordinance would be considered a proffer, and if, only if I proffered that, would that be an instance that it could be legally enforced on my property? For instance, I wanted a family apartment on my property for my husband's mother to live in, I only had six acres, and the board at that time wasn't as warm and fuzzy about family apartments. So I had to proffer that I would never divide my property in order to get that family apartment. And that's in the deed that goes with my six-acre parcel that I used to own in Castleton. So I'm not sure how we can request that somebody on a 16-foot right-of-way not have anything happening between 11:00 and 8:00 in the morning. That's a request, but it's not a determination, it's not something that says black and white, you can't do this. If we request that they have under 50 peoples, they have 50 pieces of equipment, they have to agree to that. It's not something that's in the ordinance that's black and white. So I've looked into Falkir's ordinance, and the standard contracting business, which is our residential, is allowed in almost every district in Falkir County. But this larger contractor's yard is only allowed in its commercial district. I know we don't have a lot of commercial districts, but we also have to think about the fact that we have a lot of rural land that is not protected under this office, contractor's office shop lot. Our ordinance right now has withstood a lawsuit, so we're still protected, but this ordinance needs work. It needs road standards, it needs minimum employees or maximum employees that work there. I mean, I just looked at, like, for instance, Falkir County, for a residential shop yard only allows them to be on a lot that is direct access to a road designated as a major collector or higher. Then they have a nice map in their ordinance that shows what a road, a major collector is. Then they have a list of what a major collector is. That's even for the small contractor's yard. We're not talking about what we're talking about here tonight. What we're talking about here tonight is allowing all those people that have to be on commercial land in Falkir to come out here and use our land for that. We are supposed to be, Rappahannock County, a scenic masterpiece perfected by nature, and we are going to let man destroy that. I just, I request that more work gets done on this. I know it's come back, and we've done it before, but I don't, I feel that more work needs to be done on this before we just pass something and then 20 contractor's yards get in before we can make amendments again. So what we have now has withstood a lawsuit, let's keep that for now, but let's not just pass something to be passing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marla. Can I make one more comment? Right now, this is what staff has when we have road standards to apply. And staff has said, in multiple staff reports, that a road appears to meet type 2 road standards. So if we're going to make type 2 road standards, be a type 2 road, let's work on what they have to enforce it by before we start making this for everything that we have. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The current proposed contractor yard ordinance has come a long way since it was first presented. I commend the Planning Commission and the board for being thoughtful, hearing the public and taking the time to more fully consider and vet this. The 250-foot front, rear, side setback is a very important mitigation component with this type of commercial use. For the sake of consistency, on line 30, it would be good to spell out 5 as it has been done in line 19. In line 52, maybe recommend spelling out 10 and putting the numeral 10 in parentheses as we do in other parts of our ordinance. It came to light with the recent Country Inn application that the 10-foot setback that is in our ordinance appeared to be a typo, a zero was dropped, and the intended setback was actually 100 feet. Using both text and numerals helps add clarity. I do have some questions and concerns regarding optional light, noise, dust, vermin, et cetera plans and traffic management plans. Those can be requested by the administrator and the commission, should the board be included here as well. We have removed previous references to a maximum number of vehicles and equipment, and we are not addressing size and scope anywhere. We do not distinguish in any way between light or heavy vehicles and equipment. This is done in other jurisdictions, gross vehicle weight, number of axles, height, length, and other criteria can be used to do this. And I apologize, I had a handout for you, I'll give it to you after I finish. Fairfax County is in the process of a zoning ordinance amendment for contractor's office shop and construction vehicles. They reference Prince William County and Montgomery County, Maryland, as other jurisdictions that define commercial vehicle uses as, quote, "any vehicle more than 21 feet in length, more than 8 feet in height, with a gross vehicle weight reference of 12,000 pounds or more, or containing more than three axles." Text of some relevant light versus heavy commercial vehicles and equipment language is in the handout I will give you. I have copies of the full Fairfax County ordinance if members of the board or staff would like it. Establishing a maximum square foot area covered by general term vehicles doesn't address the scale of a particular vehicle or a piece of equipment, and there is a huge distinction in the impact of a number of small mass vehicles or equipment versus heavy commercial ones. And I'm thinking like large lifts, cranes, things of that nature. As other jurisdictions tighten their ordinances to address impacts they experience with contractor yards, businesses may look to relocate to counties that are less restrictive, like Rappahannock. Once a special exception used is approved and exists, it is the nature of businesses to want to be successful and expand. When a special exception for contractor yard is approved, and then the business grows and negative impacts develop, how will issues and public concerns be addressed afterwards? Is it assumed that each application will include some sort of standard conditions? For example, we do this with tourist home permits now terminating upon sale or transfer of the property. With contractor yards, would we include periodic reviews tied to impacts or complaints, or the ability to impose additional requirements like a light, noise, dust plan, or a traffic plan, or screening, et cetera, as a condition of the permit after the special exception has been granted to ensure continued compatibility? Is there something we should consider adding from an ordinance perspective that may provide some mechanism to address adverse changes that may develop as a business grows? I'm not sure what the right answer is here, but the very nature of some contractor yards lends them to potentially have more adverse impacts than some other types of commercial activity. There is nothing that appears to specify setbacks from a well, a septic drain field, a stream, a pond, or other environmentally sensitive area. And we've had situations in other special use permits where a septic drain field was in a portion of a driveway or parking area, or encroaching into a flood plain. We have businesses now where vehicles are near waterways. Should large, heavy equipment, storage, and use require more of a setback in certain circumstances, and I just referenced principle 7 of our comp plan. As currently proposed, I do not see where we are addressing lighting compliance with the dark skies initiative, and that would be principle 3 of our plan. Chemical spills and lighting plans are at administrative discretion. Hazardous chemical use or storage isn't mentioned. I'm wondering what an acceptable light, noise, dust, vermin, smoke, fumes, and odor mitigation plan might look like? Where are we clarifying that? And how would staff assess whether such a plan was acceptable? Is it appropriate to permit a commercial contractor yard in residential village and RR5 districts? While there could be a parcel in such zoning areas that might qualify, should we potentially... While there could be a parcel, uh, in such zoning areas that might qualify, should we potentially encourage such an application? My hope is that we might be able to make this proposed language just a bit better to head off issues down the road. Um, I would respectfully disagree with the previous speaker that this is only about visuals. There was a prior situation years ago on Seven Ponds Road where the time of day, the noise, um, the fumes, um, a lot of other activity was part of the issue. So thank you, and I'll get you your handout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the courtroom? All right, I'm going to move to Zoom. We have several people on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to contractor yards, please raise your hand. All right, not seeing any hand online. I am going to close the public hearing. Ms. Smith, do you wanna?
Well, I, I think this, uh, suffers from bad timing. And, uh, I think we all got the email from staff that in the board meeting when last we discussed this, um, I think the expectation for the ten acre parcel was that we would have three to four acres of usable space for the use, was the numbers on the fly, if I remember correctly, Mr. Curry. And what we've ended up with is, uh, what is it on the table attached to board docs tonight, right, for ten acres?
About half acre of usable on a ten acre parcel.
A half acre, which, I mean, to me, uh, it suffered from, um, on-the-spot analysis that wasn't borne out. Um, not to finger point, just to say what happened. Um, I don't think the scaling is right with the setbacks on the lot size. Um, wheels were already in motion at the planning commission to have the public hearing by the time those numbers sussed out. So, you know, we were committed to a course of action, uh, via the advertisement. So, um, I have to say, I think there's, um, some issues with the current version. I, I don't particularly like, you know, the only a half acre of use for ten acres. That's not what we were anticipating when we sent it on to the planning commission. I, I think there is some work to be done. I, the more we kick the wheels on this thing, the more that I wonder if general standards aren't the way to continue to address these. They've been very successful in the past.
Oh, in terms of the litigation, um, the protracted litigation over, uh, over this contractor's yard special exception permit that we voted to deny, um, Mr. Capielli on the other side of that, um, litigation. Where did we, in summary, where did we end up on that? Why, what ultimately did the appeals court conclude about our determination? I mean?
I think in a nutshell, the, the appeals court determined that, well, in Supreme Court. The dis, legislative decision of the Board of Supervisors was fairly debatable.
Correct. So, so I appreciate Ms. Lee's comment that, um, we did, we did withstand a test of our ordinance. And I know I testified in the lower court proceeding in that lawsuit and, um, we, we made a legislative decision that, 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 um, what you, whatever you wanna call it, the, that project in that place was not a contractor's yard, and we properly denied it. And I feel like the appeals court, um, decision was quite strong, um, as, as written. And so at least in the interim period, it gives us protection. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, some of the comments tonight, including Ms. Lee's comment, uh, observations about road standards. And hearing from Ms. Smith, who chairs the planning commission, that she's reluctant to go forward with adopting something, I, I would probably agree with that. I do, um, disagree with Mr. Makala, um, suggestion that fast-growing trees are a proper buffer. I mean, I can say that one property that's, um, been before us now for several years, um, and subject to litigation. I don't think Redwood Forest would make a, much of a difference there from a visual perspective. And I think we're headed in the right direction with the, um, the buffers that are written into this draft. I mean, that's, that's the only way to accomplish sort of, uh, limiting, uh, adverse visual impact is, is by, um, instituting buffers from property lines. I think that's critical. Um, I, I still believe that those buffers are the way to accomplish that, not by having people try to plant trees to uh, make their neighbors happy. Um, but I think the road standard point was important. And then, um, I am concerned about this usable space question and, um, the ten acre lot size in general. So I would be reluctant to, um, vote to adopt anything tonight. And I, I do feel like, um, we, again, we have withstood one test um, of our current ordinance as written, and I think we, um, did the right thing there. And I think we would do the right thing again until we get something different on the books, so.
Well, I would, um, both Ms. Smith and Mr. Whitson covered a lot of my concerns just now, but, um, I definitely, I do wanna, the screening is very important, uh, uh, very important. Having, um, having lived through something very similar myself, um, I, I think that should, we don't back off of that at all. Um, also, a couple of other things that I noticed that I'm, the language is a little ambiguous, which can be good or bad. Um, but for instance, in number thirteen applicant shall provide proof of a valid contractor's license, um, you know, how often they do expire? Um, how, how would we enforce that? How, how do we know they've provided that on, you know, whatever basis, an annual basis, by annual basis, um, the, having the special exceptions terminate with sale. You know, that might not be a bad thing to explore. Um, but I too am worried about the lot size, um, the half acre, the half acre lot size. Um, we don't wanna be too anti-business, certainly. Um, and honestly, structure is need, uh, like I said, the, the language sometimes is ambiguous. So I think it's actually a favor, um, for our business, or our potential businesses, I should say, prospective businesses, if we have good, clear guidelines that are, um, easy to follow and, you know, kind of prevent, prevent, uh, misunderstandings down the road.
I did just wanna say too, I don't know if you all have heard much about this outside of meetings. I mean, I've, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on this. And it does, it does cross my mind that some of the people that this might affect have probably spent the week plowing snow. Um, so probably, again, not a, not a great timeline to act on this tonight.
I also wanna, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite finished.
I am so sorry.
I mean, I was finished, but I had another thought.
I did too.
I, and I do wanna, I just wanna back up a little bit and think, um, we had a good springboard to this. We had a good springboard. I think this work is really good. I think I appreciate the input that we hear from those who walk the, walk this life and, and those who, um, are very observant and, um, yeah, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that it was appreciated.
Did you have another something?
Um, uh, all I would just say that, you know, again, the math is I think we've had five of these applications come before the board in, in many years, decades. Um, one of them is no longer in business. One of them was arguable whether it was even necessary or not. So we've really only had three of these applications in the last twenty-five, thirty years. Um, I, I just think that we have plenty of time to refine this if that's, um, what we'd like to do. We should probably, uh, take more information in and have a follow-up discussion on it.
We have good momentum on this though, so I, I for one would like to see the momentum continue, um, because clear, you know, to be unclear is to be unkind. And, um, I think we owe that to everyone, businesses, residents, each other. So I, I just don't wanna lose any momentum.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is, this is, this is complicated a little bit. Um, I think Marlene is right. Um, I have a lot of folks in my district that are on multiple odd configurations of a single lane. And, um, what kind of discussions did you guys have at the planning commission level about roads leading to that? I know we talked about this.
We didn't have it in regards to this use, but we have been having extensive conversations regarding road standards for the short-term lodging.
Yeah.
And is, is that something we should begin to build into everything?
Mm-hmm.
It's something perhaps we should consider whether it's appropriate.
I think the one phone call I get the most is from people who live on shared right-of-ways, asking me what the county can do about their neighbor's problems. And I'm like, well, have you talked to your neighbor? Not yet. Uh, and I know that it just, you know, folks buy pieces of property out here from other places, wanting peace and quiet and that and the other. Um, but at the same time, we need to foster business and not make this impossible for people. Um, but I do think that Marlene has got a good point, which is that, you know, if you have these, uh, you know, bunch of lots on a washed-out road. Yeah, or just even, even if it's a nice road and then you put a, you know, heavy use on it, um.
For the record, that is allowed today with your current ordinance.
Uh.
There are no special requirements for a contractor's office shop yard today, zero.
Exactly, and that's what we're trying to do.
They can go anywhere, have any impact. It's only subject to the public hearing process.
But that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and so do you want to constrain those general standards in any way? And there was a version, the last version had very specific numbers. And the board through public hearing process moved away from specific numbers towards subjective language that would allow the public hearing process and conditions, um, not proffers, but conditions, to be imposed by the board to allow that use so that the impacts are mitigated by conditions, uh, so that that ultimate impact is consistent with a typical buy right use in that area.
So one of the, yeah, and I, and, and I think that that's kind of what I'm bringing up now, 'cause I think we did have a discussion before about, I mean, we could limit this to access to a primary highway. I'm just saying that we could, sure.
We did talk about not.
And trucks being able to go right onto the highway is kind of a no-brainer. I mean, trucks coming off of Kaiser Run is very different than like at where we are on Burya.
I don't wanna be argumentative, but generally in high intense uses, there's a frontage road, so trucks don't have to enter right onto the highway. You know, that's not a good design. Generally, you, you know, you wanna have a proper intersection, not an entrance. But it, it can be good if the type of vehicle and the type of entrance are conditioned so that the entrance matches the vehicle, which is, would require a condition of, of a permit for a site-specific location and site-specific use, which you can do without this ordinance. Uh, you can just do it from your general standards.
I actually thought the, so I can't remember what they call it in Falkir, but as she was saying, the, the arteries or whatever, that there are, I see what you're saying, actually, is that, okay, like, if you do have trucks rolling out onto five twenty-two, it's actually better if they're coming out on Rotisole or Fletcher's Mill than it is on five twenty-two. But the point is, is that we could designate those roads.
Yeah, of course.
That's more work, but it takes it off of shared right-of-ways.
I think shared of right-of-ways would be accounted for under general standards because it would be impacting somebody's property, quality of life, all of those things. I think if it's a shared right-of-way, um, we already have a way to get at that and deny it if we were so inclined. We certainly have to use that for, uh, shared driveways for, for other special exceptions. Um, you don't have to throw everything into the basket. Sometimes you already have the tools at your disposal. Um.
When I watched the planning commission, um, tape, the video, it seemed to be people were good with what we have in front of us.
Well, we didn't, we didn't really have staff with us to work through the complex number issue that came up with what our expectations versus the way the numbers bore out. And also, I mean, I think that's a question for the board.
Well, I would say regarding the acreage, uh, the minimum lot size, you can have a limited use. With a larger lot size, you can have a larger use.
Right.
I, I don't see any issue whatsoever with that. And it sounded to me from some board and public comment that maybe tanker's too small. But it also sounded to me that maybe it's too restrictive on, um, on businesses. And so if, if, from what I'm hearing is the board maybe doesn't wanna put any more constraints on the use and just allow the general special exception process as you have today without any constraints, no guardrails, and allow the Board of Supervisors sitting in that day to decide the site-specific condition, whether it's a number of acres, what the setback is, have they all be subject to condition for a site-specific use?
I think that's what, that's what we have currently.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what we have currently and, uh, to Christine's point, um, we just happen to have one problem application that, um, has focused our attention. And that, and with that application, we with, withstood the litigation that stemmed from it. So I do think some refinement, and you've used the terms, I'll use again, guardrails, parameters, um, to bolster the general standards. I mean, through the litigation, I believe ultimately we hung our hat on general standards and, and the, that fairly debatable, fairly debatable legal standard, um, ultimately, the, its foundation was the fact that we cited general standards in our decision to deny the application. So here, um, I think we're headed in the right direction. Um, and maybe it is a balancing act between relying on the general standards that have worked to date, um, but maybe with some more specificity. And there's a lot of specificity here, but as always, there are unintended consequences. And it's good to hear from property owners, uh, like Ms. Lee have thought this through. And I have no problem just thinking through a bit more how we, how we achieve a balance, um, between putting down some rules, um, but, um, while making it everything enforceable and have the ordinance function as intended and not create unintended consequences, um.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think that putting up some s- standards is a good idea. I just think that we should not do it on right-of-ways. I mean, I think we could just pick some roads or just say it can't be on a right. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around that.
The others, I'm sorry.
I just, I agree that, like, just depending on the composition of the board, you could get, you know, ten years, somebody gets it, and then ten years later, somebody else does, and, and it's kind of the same, just depending on who's sitting there. I just, my district is chopped up in an interesting way where I can see people wanting to do specific things. And there's five of the people that live on the same road. And yes, we would take that into consideration as a board, but I don't know. I just feel like it's pretty okay to say, well, you know, just, you gotta be on a road. That just makes kind of sense to me, but that's just me.
I don't, I mean, we've had a lot of progress. I don't wanna feel like we're going backwards. Um, and I wanna, I would like to get through this at the first quarter of the year if we could possibly do that. Is this something, Christine, that you think should go back to the planning commission, even though everybody voted for it?
I, I think that we need input on the, on the lot size versus usable area. But I think that's the, that's the key. I, I, I understand that people want more detail. Um, I, I don't think it's, I don't think that in any case, applying for a special exception is just checking boxes. Um, we have, we are a small county. We have staff that is more than willing to meet with people and discuss other applications with them and work through the details of the application. Um, I can understand where a road standard would all. Um, I can understand where a road standard would also be a, a useful measure and something we may want to implement more and more.
We, could we keep it on our, on our agenda?
Special work session.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to wrestle with it, kind of like we did on signs recently.
Yep.
Because it is, I mean, the whole point of a public hearing. Whole point of a public hearing is to hear from the public and I think we heard some very thoughtful comments and. I mean, we represent these folks, so we should take their comments into account. Um, but yeah, I'd be happy to sit down in a work session or at our next meeting, whatever, and in the meantime. Uh, like I, I'll, I'll make a commitment to go through it myself and offer some specific. Ideas for strengthening it. And, you know, I do have some PTSD from the last time we dealt with contractors' yards.
Um, how would you feel about a work session in January?
It's fine.
Sure.
I know it's the eighth and not the sixth, but hopefully two days won't.
No, I, I appreciate your commitment to.
No, everybody's done a lot of work.
Keeping the ball rolling. Yeah, I agree.
Does the board want to take, uh, some dispositive action on this, so the public isn't worried that you're going to adopt it at some future meeting?
Sure, I, I'll put forward a motion that we, um. I guess the expression is table, table this.
I, I would just. Frame it so that you will.
Yeah, I was gonna get to the word, yeah, yeah, um, put forward a motion that we. Uh, that we, um, take no action with respect to the. Ordinance language before us, um, pending further discussion of future work session and. A, a public hearing that might be scheduled thereafter, once we have revised language stemming from a work session or other board meeting.
That's long.
Well.
Seven fifty three.
Oh, gotcha. All right, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Second, um, any discussion? I just appreciate all the work that's been done, both at the staff level and at the planning commission and by quite a few members of the, um. County and, and don't want you to think we're pushing off work. I think this is the right decision to get it right. If we're gonna sign it.
The numbers have to add up at the end of the day. If the numbers don't add up, we're doing more harm than good by adopting it.
All right.
Can I, can I interrupt real quick to give, um, Jeff Henry a shout out? Because we had a power outage in Sperryville the other night and, um, our E C came out. It was that miserable, miserable, windy, bitter cold night. And R E C came out and got power back on in an hour and a half.
Nice job, R E C.
Really awesome. Thank you so much to Jeff and everyone there at R E C for getting our power back up. I'm glad to see him online tonight.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Come up with a date. Next on the agenda is public comment. And this is about anything. Um, if you would like to speak during public comment, please be recognized and come on up. Do we want to answer Ms. Lee's question about proffers? Because I did say we would answer that.
I think I understand what you're saying.
He's just saying.
Conditions and not proffers, so.
So I have a question about our ordinance. Have we brought our ordinance up? To meet what state code requires our ordinance to allow, rather than. Not what it's required to. There are things in our ordinance that are not allowed by state code now. Have we done that? Okay, we're not gonna answer. Okay, I get it. Um, Berkeley Group did a study on that. We paid them, I'm sure, a lot of money. And I thought that was their original and purpose was to get us up to. Standards for state code and I just think that's something that we should go back and revisit. Um, I, I have some comments about the transient lodging. And the road standards that are being specified for that. Again. We have a very basic map of what a type two road is. And it's, it's hard for staff to enforce that. Again, I'm gonna refer to Falkir County Code. And in their code, they specify and give a picture of what their road standards are. I'll be happy to share this with anybody who wants it, because I can get another copy. And again, those major roads would be like Crest Hill, um. Maybe Jericho, maybe, but Harris Hollow would not be a road that like a contractor's yard should be on. It's barely passable with two regular, normal cars on a normal day, not to go back to that. But transient lodging is worrying for me because we have made some. Major changes and it's been put out for public. Hearing, I guess in February and road standards for, um, like R V parks. There are no road standards for those. Again, they're very vague, but a type two road, we, our staff has already said, it appears to meet that. We need to work on our road standards and say what our road standards are and then in, in. Embed them in our ordinance where they need to be. We can't have a type two road standard for everything in the ordinance. Some, some things are major uses and an R V park. When we go camping, I have a camper, we have a twenty four foot truck and a forty foot camper. Could you imagine that coming up Harris Hollow every day? No.
Please don't.
Ten times a day, twenty times a day, because that's what we've done to R Vs, R V parks. They're allowed pretty much anywhere there's type two road standard. We took away road frontage. A parcel doesn't even have to have two hundred feet of road frontage anymore. So how does a sixty some foot vehicle get off on a turn lane? And not, how, how do we, how do we, how do we make that work on a, on a side road? I mean, there are some roads that I really agree that all these uses could be on. But we have to take time and take a step back. If we're gonna do it, we should do it right. I, I don't think that thirty days should be how long somebody camps in a camp, in a trailer R V park. We're not talking about a mobile home park like we have in Amistville. That's, that's a totally different use. So I'm gonna ask that the board maybe make some decisions about the transient lodging. That we're gonna have a public hearing for next month at planning commission level. Maybe they take some of that into account and maybe make some road standards for that, maybe reinstitute some of those. Revisions that we've taken out, like for instance, we took out the definition of a travel trailer. And parts of our ordinance say that what a travel trailer is, and that is not deemed a mobile home. So if you take out the definition of a travel trailer and somebody wants to live on their property while they're building their house. They can live in a travel trailer while they build their house. And that was always something that wasn't allowed in our ordinance that. I won't go down that road. I'll just keep that to myself. Um, but there's just lots of things that we. We can't just take things out and not have something to cover us for. Staff has to have teeth in order to enforce the ordinance and if they don't have teeth, they don't have any way to enforce the ordinance. And do we really want to take people's money? I mean, it's not cheap to apply for a special use permit. I think it's like seven or nine hundred dollars. Do we want to take somebody's nine hundred dollars when we know? That on a right of way, they're never gonna get through you? Do we want to do that or we just want to stay in our ordinance? That this can't happen on a right of way, unless it's fifty feet wide or whatever. I mean, all those things are doable and very easy and then we don't waste taxpayers' dollars. I probably have fifty other things that I want to say, but I, I, I love Rappahannock County. And I want to see Rappahannock County remain this view. And I understand that we want businesses in Rappahannock County, but. I haven't done this. I say I'm going to. Has anybody ever gone to Falkir County and took a ten acre parcel? With a house on it, same house, and a ten acre parcel in Rappahannock County with a house on it? And saw what Falkir County pays for taxes and what Rappahannock County pays for taxes? It would just be interesting to me to know if I'm paying more than what the guys in Falkir are paying, because I don't think I am. And I have a whole lot better quality of life. I can go to Walmart in Culpeper. I can go to, um, Food Lion in Moreton. I don't need that here. I don't need all those things. I want. This. We advertise that on our website. This is what we are. This is what I ask you to uphold. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do need fiber, though. I'm Mark Anderson from the Piedmont District. I've been thinking a lot about the broadband project the last two and a half years. Our, our household perhaps discusses it more than most. And I just, I had a flash of insight after a lot of legal analysis. That what our arrangement is with All Points Broadband is not a contract. It's a grant. It's, it's, it's federal money that went into a state grant that's being administered by the state. And we, the broadband authority now, not the board of supervisors, are attempting to comply with the terms of that grant. So all this needs attached and they're legion on you individually and the county and everything. Uh, for not ensuring a proper contract that could be enforced. The third party beneficiary clause is excluded. That doesn't pertain to administering a grant, in my view. A grant is something the state dictates the conditions for. We have to comply as best we can and I, as best I can tell, for the facts. Rappahannock County's done everything it was supposed to do to comply with the terms of that, uh, body application, the terms of the grant. And All Points Broadband, as best I can tell, has not done anything to cause a default in its performance. It's, it's been delayed in its completion date. And I think that was foreseeable a year ago, maybe fifteen months ago, with the incident with the poles and all that. Uh, the only surprise was it was a delay of a year instead of a year, uh, delay of three months or six months or something like that. But they're well aware, the state is well aware, there's a hard deadline for completion of this project. Because of the federal requirements and it may change at the last minute or it may not. Uh, we have to be ready to get this thing done as best we can. I, I'm certain. The people from the Commonwealth, the people from the regional commission or whatever the heck it is that is supposed to administer this. That we don't belong to, but we sort of do.
We don't. Relatives.
Well, we don't have a third party beneficiary contract with them either, so fine. Uh, everybody is doing his or her part or its part under modern usage to try to make this thing complete. And I, I hope we do get there. As far as I can tell, all the parties to this project are proceeding in good faith. And so long as they are, there shouldn't be any more talk about litigation or firing people or jailing officials.
Yeah.
Even on, even on the fetid ground of our, uh, public blogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Been threatened with words.
Hello, my name's Michelle McKinney. I'm in Jackson. I hadn't planned to talk, but I just felt inspired. I want to mention, talk about the rural broadband. Um, I work from home. I'm completely dependent on the internet. And even now, um, everything in my house is dependent on the internet. If I want to use my treadmill, I have to have the internet. I want everything, even I make a doctor's appointment, everything is through the internet. And I know, I feel, I know we have Starlink and some people love it, but it's very expensive. I have too many trees. And I feel like, to me, I feel like the internet is really, it's, it's like your electricity. It, it should be a public good and I shouldn't have to depend so much on Starlink. So I just really hope that we can continue the project and we can support it, because there's really, there's a lot of people like me. Who our whole lives revolve around the internet and especially even now, we're getting more and more zooms. And even now, even when you, your job, you have to prove that you have the speed to do the job. So we really need quality. I know if, even though we have it, but for a job, you really have to prove that you have the speed. So I just hope that we can continue as a community to support this, because there's so many people like myself. Who are dependent on this for their jobs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob McCall, Jackson District. Uh, I was watching the news tonight about the fires in, uh, Los Angeles. And, uh, I got to thinking about March last year here. And my, my career was in firefighting. I was a volunteer firefighter. I was a paid firefighter. I fought fire, I fought wildfires for the B L M. And we were really, really lucky last March. And to, to my knowledge, there was supposed to be a study of, of, you know. The actions that were taken or whatever and a report issued, which I went on the, I went on the county website trying to find. Uh, perhaps a copy of a report like that or whatever, but also, uh, the, the clearinghouse. Or the clearing that was doing the, uh, study for us or whatever. I went to the meeting that they had, the first meeting, which was the summary and findings report that they had at the elementary school. And there was supposed to be a final report issued on that. And there again, I was on, looked tonight, uh, on the website and I cannot find a copy of that. I've got my copy. I, I can't find a copy of this either, the preliminary. Uh, this is my copy I got at the, at that meeting. But. If, to my way of thinking, you know, it's taxpayer dollars going for these consultants that we are. You know, hiring or whatever, but the reports don't seem to be easily accessible to the public. And we've got a website and, you know, I, I wonder why they're not on there. The, uh, the, the. Study from twenty fifteen used to be on there and that seems to have disappeared on, on fire. Uh, and, and one that, the one that always remains was the committee that I was on, which was the economic. It started out as the Economic Development Committee years ago. And we immediately changed the name because economic development did not go well. The term in Rappahannock, but that one is on there. But, but we, you know, if we're gonna have these reports. They need to be available to the public. And also, as far as firefighting goes here. We, uh, we're trying to find more volunteers. Flint Hill is doing excellent job. They're, they're to be commended. But the, to me, the emphasis seems to be on the rescue side and, and that is very important. And, you know, we, we get a lot more calls for that, so, so we, we need the help. But I'm trying to find any kind of statistics on our. Fire, you know, how many firefighters do we have? What are their qualifications? Because that was my job and I know what it takes. And, and I really have questions as far as whether we have adequate fire protection anymore. With, with the personnel we have and the experience they have, because what happens with firefighting is that the young people. Learn from, you know, the older people or whatever goes down the line. And we've lost that, I think. In that, you know, you can go to, you can go get your firefighter certification, but if you can't get this, get with somebody that's got ten years of experience fighting fires. You're nowhere. I mean, it's the O J T where you really learn how to do the job. And, and we've got to start looking at that because we've been really lucky. We've, we're lucky we haven't got anybody hurt. And that's because of our response times, because by the time we get there, it's called surrounded and drowned in that there's no interior firefighting going on. But, you know, if, if we had a situation that comes up like that, we could lose somebody really easy. Because you've got to know what you're doing and you've got to trained and, and done it, you know, with people that know what they're doing. In order to know how to do it. So I think we need, as a county, to take a serious look through the, uh, public safety. Committee at where we are with fire service and exactly what we've got. Because we've got lots of equipment, lots of trucks, but if you don't have the people and the knowledge, they're not doing any good. So I, you know, we really need maybe in twenty five to put some effort into that and, uh, see if we can, uh, get that rolling also along with. Along with the rescue, which seems to be doing better. Thank you.
Thank you all for reappointing me today. Alvin Henry, Hampton District. Happy to serve another four years.
Thank you for serving.
Yep. Uh, couple thoughts tonight. Uh, start off with, uh, on the contractor's yard. I thought it was a brilliant idea to come up with a half an acre site. I thought it was a brilliant idea to come up with a half an acre site. By the time you, you look at the impact on that, you do your screening, the size of it, 10 acre lot. I think it's going to be very little impact on the neighbors. I'm concerned about the scaling that we're talking about. When you go up to 50 acres, you have something large. You go up to 500 acres, something larger. I have a one acre lot in Mount Jackson, zone industrial. It's vacant. I wasn't doing anything with it. Some nice gentleman that was doing FOPR optics, not these guys, but came and said, hey, we'll rent this from you. I said, okay, fine. He gave me $1,000 a month. They came in there and holy moly. I would not want this one acre lot in the middle of 10 acres, 20 acres or 30 acres in Rappahannock County. It's fine there, it's zone industrial, but we don't want that. On Falkir County, you go and find a two acre lot for industrial use storage like this. It's going to run between 500 and a million dollars. So I'm a successful little contractor. I got 10, 20 employees. I got this equipment. Say, hey, you know what? I go up Rappahannock County, buy 50 acres, build my house, take two or three acres. I'm going to pay 500,000 for 50 acres. I can take two or three acres in the middle of it, have my contractor's yard there. I can live there. This would be great. I just saved a million bucks. And all of a sudden, we got a contractor's yard there. Many years ago, I used to have conversations with John McCarthy on permits and things like this. And he says, the reason we have these permits is to let on steam. You know, we don't have a lot of industrial. We don't have a lot of commercial. So we have to allow the citizens in the county to do things. And that's why we had a special use permit process to recognize things work in one area, may not in another, but it's not a universal process. And I, I understood that. And, you know, basically, you know, somebody said, this is, I viewed this as a cottage kind of industry to accommodate the local people, the local contractors, electrician plumbers, whatever. They have two or three people. Might be snow removal people. Half an acre works out good. They get bigger and they move up. They have better needs, bigger needs. Maybe they, they need to go to an industrial area, someplace that, you know, accommodates them. And if we want this, maybe we should take 25, 50 acres someplace and rezone it and say, hey, when you get this successful, instead of being this ag land, go over here and find something that works in this industrial land. So I'm really concerned about scaling this. I'm thinking, you know, if somebody buys 500 acres, what are we going to allow them? 25 acres to do, 20 acres? You could have a major contractor like GEI or Rapid One. Look at Rapid One going into, we're on the left. They use two acres there, basically, along that stream. I couldn't imagine that two acres being in the middle of 25, 50 acres in the county. So, you know, I, I view this as an accommodation to our local people to keep them in business and doing what they do. But once they get bigger, I think they need to go find someplace else that's more of a storefront that accommodates their growth that they've had and their future growth. So that's my comments there. Secondly, on the courthouse. I watched the tape last month and, you know, I watched the judge did explanations on Loudoun County, this and that. I thought, gosh, this is really dichotomy here. You've got Loudoun County, the richest county in the country, or the fastest growing county, wealthiest county, some kind of, something like this. Then you've got Rappahannock. So it's kind of like Jed Clampett meeting up with Elon Musk. And Elon is telling Jed Clampett, you know, what to build. And I thought, you know, this doesn't match up, you know? You know, basement, security, 30,000 square feet. I don't know. We're building a bank in Warrenton and the architect said it's going to be $500, $600. Well, we're about done now and it's approaching $1,000 a foot. So these costs are going to escalate. And a couple of thoughts here. This is a long-term process, but maybe we should go to Richmond and say, hey, we need to have a judicial district that we match up with. And we're not a Loudoun County twin. We're not kind of outgrown, we're not the same size as Falkir. Maybe we should be matched up with Culpeper, Madison, Green, Orange, or move all across the mountain to be in the same district with Warren, Shenador, Page. I don't think we match up with Loudoun. When we apply Loudoun standards to Rappahannock, it's going to cost us millions of dollars. So if you look at these other courthouses in the other counties, they've been updated and things like this. And, you know, they haven't spent that kind of money. I was on a trial in Madison the other day for two days and I got a chance to sit there and study their courthouse. And it seemed pretty sensible what they did there. And they didn't break the bank. And what worries me is that I'm starting to hear numbers float around like 20 million dollars, you know? And, you know, that's a lot of money when you look at the size of Rappahannock County and that's $3,000 per, basically, per every woman, man and child in the county. And that means taxes for a long time. So I think it's something we need to look at there. I think what we should say is that our budget is X dollars. Our budget, I haven't heard anything about a budget number. It's 12, 12 million, 15 million, 10 million. But set a budget number and say, hey, guys, this is where we're going. And this is where, where we're headed to. This is what we have to have. Because all of a sudden, we get a $20 million tag and then we start trying to, how are we going to finance it and things like this? And, you know, we're influenced by Northern Virginia with the pay scales. We've got a lot of people here that deserve the pay they're getting. You know, we've got a lot of people now making six digits and they deserve every penny of it. But it comes down to the size of the county and what we have to afford. And affordability is going to become an issue. And, you know, maybe sooner or later, we start talking about land use, you know? Can we afford land use anymore? Is it fair to, you know, tax the people that have a modest house and a couple of kids, you know, more than somebody that has 500 acres in land use that doesn't pay much taxes? So I, I think, I like the county way it is, but I think everybody has to live within their budgets. And I, I'd like to see some parameters that we talked about earlier. What do you call them, borders, boundaries, whatever we're talking about on this, on this thing? Parameters, whatever? Put on this thing and box it in. And try to make the size fit and start long-term looking down the road and match us up with somebody more equally in a judicial district. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Marlena Lee. And I said I was from Jackson District earlier, but I'm from Hampton District. I'm sorry. So Al got me thinking about some projects that I didn't even think about tonight. And I agree with them that the courthouse has to have boundaries. We are a small rural community and we cannot have the same courthouse as Loudoun County. I also think that as far as the broadband project, until there is a significant footprint and work being done in Rappahannock County for the broadband project, I don't see how we should invest more money. I, if I had Dish Network come out to my house and they wanted $2,000 before they got there, and then I gave them the $2,000 and two years later, they weren't there, I'd be trying to get my money back and I wouldn't be giving them anymore. I'm sorry. We're a rural community and the people that live here need to remember that. If we want to stay rural, we have to have a rural mindset when we approve and set budgets and do things. If you live in Rappahannock County, you have to expect less, not more. We are rural and scenic and set by nature. We're not set by man, we're set by nature. And if that's the way we want to remain, we have to be mindful of that when we agree to do things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marlena.
John Capielli, Hampton District. Christine, you're probably going to be shocked if you're sitting down. Thank you for acknowledging the switch on the size of usable space. As I told you at the planning commission, I thanked you for your efforts. So Christine, you're right, you're right. I'll tell you that you're right. And you deserve it. Mr. Whitson, this is the other side of the same spoon.
So I think our rule is you address the board.
I understand.
I appreciate you calling me out.
The board has received some information tonight that says that the State Supreme Court ruled that the decision by this board was debatable. Unfortunately, that's not what the decision read because the decision cost me $50,000. It said that the property values of my neighbors were to be protected. Interesting part was that I bought the neighbors out. So that's why we're going to federal court in another month. The litigation is not over, not even close. But I do thank you for looking into the public's comments about the contractor's yard permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Nelson in the courtroom? I'm not seeing any. There's several people online. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment? Please raise your hand. All right. I'm not seeing any hands raised online, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
Motion to adjourn. Just kidding.
Anyone wishing to step out, please do. All right. And now we are moving into the presentation by All Points Broadband.
At this point, you need to convene the broadband.
Oh, that's right. Don't leave yet, Mr. Whitson.
I'm not.
You need to convene the broadband authority.
Okay. With the chair convening.
Yes, I'm going to convene the broadband authority. Mark and Margaret, yep.
While they're convening, I just want to point out that Jackson is really represented tonight. Even I'll take Ms. Lee as, you know, a self-proclaimed Jackson resident.
For the reminder.
Honorable.
What's that?
Honorable. Yes.
All right.
So before the presentation, the broadband authority has a few matters to go through, including adopting their agenda, adopting their minutes from their last meeting.
I have the other problem. Excuse me.
What's that?
Oh. Thank you. All right. Has everyone looked at the broadband agenda? We've got minutes to approve as Mr. Curry just said.
So somebody could, if we get a motion to adopt the agenda for the broadband authority. Motion to adopt the agenda for the broadband authority.
A second?
Second.
Who said that?
That was Donna. This is the broadband authority. Mark?
I'm sorry.
It gets confusing sometimes. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And you have minutes from your last meeting, which was quite some time ago, which is June 3, 2024, that are provided with board docs. Motion to, a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed.
Now you have a presentation from All Points Broadband. Thank you, guys, for your patience.
Yes.
Should I just ask you a quick throw? Yes. All right, we'll stay at the, the cover sheet for a while. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. I think it'll be helpful, before we get into the specific materials of the presentation, just to provide some background on All Points and the BEAD program. So we started our company about 10 years ago to focus on rural broadband. Our mission is to get broadband to people who don't have it. We started out as a fixed wireless internet service provider. The last four or five years, we've transitioned to fiber to the home with increasing and exponential demand on broadband. At the same time, public funding to offset the cost difference between what the private sector can invest and what the actual cost is, justify that transition to fiber. The BEAD program, the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, that is the primary state grant program for encouraging internet service providers to go to areas that are deemed unserved. And this program started in 2015 or 2016 at a low dollar amount. When the American Rescue Plan Act was passed, the state took a substantial portion of that and increased the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative pool, bucket, that we can apply for. At the same time, localities were providing a portion of funding to the state and local fiscal economy. So this is a competitive program to incentivize internet service providers to build fiber broadband primarily into unserved areas. The internet service provider puts up all the cost upfront and then at a predetermined ratio, up to a certain absolute dollar amount, they can seek reimbursement along the way in arrears. For the county portion of this, it was about 30% of the initial construction cost. Majority of that is split between the county's American Rescue Plan Act allocation, philanthropy, the schools put in some funds. And I believe that the county matches the most competitive across the entire portfolio of all the counties in the state, meaning you're getting a lot of bang for your buck for any local dollars put in. All Points and the state front about 35% each of the rest of the funding. And we will go through our design, construction and service. And at each of those milestones, we present evidence to the county or the broadband authority and the state and we seek reimbursement. So the next time we get reimbursed for anything in Rappahannock County in Rappahannock County is when we construct fiber that is active in the county.
Tom, if I could just, you made an important point and I want to make sure that everyone heard that. So if Rappahannock County, in order to join this regional agreement, was required to put $5.9 million into the project. And it seems on RappNet and other, other places that everyone likes to suggest that we put 500, $5.9 million of taxpayer, local taxpayer dollars into your coffers. And I want to correct that right now. $5.9 million is comprised of a $3.5 million private donation from Mr. Akri, a $1 million grant from the PATH Foundation, and one, approximately $1.4 million of COVID relief money that by definition was restricted, meaning that for our $5.9 million buy-in to the project from Rappahannock County, exactly zero, zero local tax dollars were put into this project. And to put a point on what you just said, how many other localities in the Commonwealth put in zero local tax dollars into this project?
None comes to mind.
None.
But other counties did leverage ARPA funds, which is what we did. So, I mean, other counties have done what we did, which is use ARPA funding.
My question was how many other localities put in zero local tax dollars? I'm not talking about ARPA funds.
Well, that's what our money was. It was ARPA.
It's restricted ARPA money.
And so are other counties.
That wasn't my question.
I think Mr. Whitson's point is that we didn't use any money that we levied in this county for this project.
And so did other counties.
No, he's just saying that he's not aware of that. So other, other counties did put up ARPA dollars.
That's correct. Thank you for setting the record straight. I appreciate you.
Okay. Also important to point out, this is not ongoing subsidy for operating costs. This is just for CapEx. It doesn't go to our bottom line. It goes to pay construction bills that have been pre-approved in advance. So the local match is held in escrow, I believe, in an interest-bearing account. We draw on that when the state broadband office approves it. We have, we've learned some lessons in our projects that started a little bit earlier in the eastern part of the state. So right now, we are closing out our five-county project on the northern neck. That is a project we showed as an example of what can happen in the Valley Regional Project. And it's five counties. We built about 1,500 miles of fiber, a little under 10,000 homes who didn't have access to broadband before, now have it. We finished that in December. We're going through the closeout paperwork now. That project, Phase 1, started in July of 2021. Phase 2 was July of, well, Phase 1 was September of 2021. Phase 2 was July of 2022. So those crews and resources are now available to work in other counties. We're closing out Middlesex and King William this month. And we have construction going on in multiple other counties. So the bulk of our resources are now moving west, so to speak, across the state. We're closing out a Rural Digital Opportunity Fund program a couple of years in advance. Not every project goes according to plan, as we know here. But we've learned a lot of lessons, not only on the private sector side, but as you'll see when I get into the BEAD program, the state broadband office and the federal agency in charge of broadband funding has also learned a lot of lessons about how to set up these incentive programs. So some of the rules from BEAD are similar, some are different and improved, and I'll get into those details. I'm also going to talk about a risk mitigation plan. I'm also going to talk about a risk mitigation plan to keep the project on track. We are switching predominantly from an aerial network to an underground network. And I'll get into those details here. If there are any details that I can't answer tonight, happy to follow up. But we can go ahead and get into the presentation. So as you all know, this is a part of a regional project, so I have a slide here. We gave a regional update last month to all eight counties. The main topic of discussion there was, we had told all the counties back in May that we were coming back in the fall with an extension plan. And we knew it was going to happen. We're working on the details. In September, we presented our plan to the state. We had technical assistance from the state broadband office. They approved that, and then shortly thereafter, we scheduled our regional update. So long and short of it is, we got about a year extension to June 2026, and we were able to follow the state budget language that encouraged projects like ours to do this to shift a portion of the locations from the VADI program to the BEED program. Follow-up more on BEED. So construction right now, this is again regional, we have construction underway with Dominion Middle Mile in two counties. All Points is under construction in one county. We have 223 miles of Dominion fiber released to construction, and that is our middle mile. Now, obviously, we don't have Dominion Middle Mile in Rappahannock County, but for the overall project, that is necessary and showing progress and good faith and effort towards completing the whole project. The next bullpoint that really matters in Rappahannock County is that we shifted a portion, a significant portion of the aerial construction to underground. So originally, we had, you know, about 80,000 poles that we thought we would attach to in the project. Now it is well under 20,000. And then finally, at the end, I'll go through the BEED program. Let's go to, all right, so make-ready and undergrounding costs. We talked a lot about make-ready throughout the beginning of this program. Substantial portion of the network was planned to be on poles in Rappahannock County. It's Rappahannock Electric Co-op Poles. In most cases, you have the cost to replace a pole and the time that it takes exceeds the budget. And we spent a lot of time evaluating poles across the state. Our plan now in Rappahannock reduces it to fewer than 500 poles. It's going to be about 10 miles. So we'll analyze about 500 poles, probably attach to 260, 270, something like that. We're shifting to underground, which is relatively less expensive. Now, to be less expensive underground, that means that the anticipated make-ready was pretty expensive. But the majority of our network will be underground in Rappahannock County. To do that, we shifted about 20% of locations from the VADI program to the BEED program, and we kept our private sector funding the same in the VADI program. And when we apply for BEED, we have to put up match for those 20% as well. So we're going to put up more funding to hit the same amount of locations. This plan to shift from VADI to BEED was part of the state budget language for projects that were considered at risk by the state broadband office, which was most of the projects in our grant cycle, not just All Points, but across the state. We worked with the state to approve that, and that is what they approved in November. Couple key things here. No additional county match, ARPA or otherwise. No impact to the project schedule from the end user's perspective. And the BEED process has taken a bit to get started. This is a federal program administered by a state broadband office, and they all have to agree on a bunch of data provided by the Federal Communications Commission. So basically, a miracle that it's off the ground anyway, but it has started in December, and there's a 90-day clock for us to get our application in. I have some more details on that later on. Yeah, even though it is just for Dominion Middle Mile, there's no impact on the State Corporation Commission process. Also a good sign that we are doing the right thing. And then obviously, no difference in service level for the last mile customer. The type of network we're building is called XGS-PON. X is 10, G is gigabit, S is symmetrical. So 10 gigabits symmetrical in each direction, that's what the network is capable of. Obviously, nobody needs that today or for the next couple of years. The highest level of service we'll offer initially is gigabit. But we're signing leases for active cabinets, you know, with automatic renewals at 32 years. So we have a long-term investment here. We have to build a network that's going to scale with people's demand for who knows what type of service 10 or 15 years from now. So that's why we built XGS-PON, but nobody's buying 10 gigabits on day one. We also have an agreement with the fiscal agent, the regional commission, to apply for BEED to make sure that about 20% of locations at least have an applicant for BEED. But the federal law says that the state has to fund those locations and get them broadband. So it may sound risky to shift from one program to another, but the BEED program, Virginia got about $1.5 billion, and they are obligated to fund broadband to all of those locations. So we can go to the next slide. Maybe, I can't read it on the screen, but you should be able to read it if you zoom in on your device here. But down at the bottom, we have the overall summary of the PMO. We expect to have last mile construction in August and completing in June of 2026. We're going to turn on the first cabinet in September of this year on a rolling basis. When we had originally planned this project, we would do a whole lot more construction, build across the county, prepare for different fiber service areas, and turn them on in larger sections across the county. Even though it is a bit less effective, we're going to turn on smaller subsets of the network so we can get people connected sooner and then build out from there. So we built an active cabinet, and that is where the internet light comes in to the fiber optic cable. We amplify it up, and we send it out through the fiber optics, and we're going to build, starting out from those active cabinets. Once we get further away from the active cabinet, the internet is split up in a passive cabinet, and it goes to people's homes. In our site visit in December, we saw the middle mile construction. We saw an active cabinet. That was the one that we saw in Augusta County. And then in the warehouse, there was, you know, probably 50 of those active cabinets. But that's what we're talking about when I say active cabinet. Here's the timeline here. Key thing here is that we have close collaboration with VDOT. So switching from aerial to underground, we need obviously VDOT line-of-way permits. Each permit is up to two miles of fiber construction. We submit those to the residency. There's some permitting back and forth, maybe do a resubmission. But the idea is to create enough backlog of permitted work so that the crews can come in and have plenty of work to justify multiple crews. And we're looking at 10 to 20 miles a month, so we need a lot of crews in there to do that kind of work. And that is key for collaborating with VDOT on the residency for the permit approval. So BEED, go to the next slide. Through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, Virginia was allocated $1.5 billion to close the digital divide. We're fortunate in Virginia, that is a substantial dollar amount, considering the number of remaining unserved locations. So they are going to spend money on what's called deployment, that is fiber construction, fixed wireless service, maybe even some satellite service. And then the remainder will go to non-deployment services, like telehealth, telemedicine, affordability, adoption. But the majority will go to deployment. The law requires Virginia to have a plan for every single location in its list. Right now, there's about 130,000 locations across the state. A couple of weeks ago, they provided additional 9,900 of community anchor institutions, but those are treated the same way as regular unserved locations. They have split up the project areas. So when we contemplated our project with Rappahannock County, it was mostly countywide. That was the project area for the county. Now, the project areas are split up into ZIP code tabulation areas. So there's probably, you know, four or five in Rappahannock County.
Is that on the next?
Seven, maybe. And some of them.
Let's just flip into the next so they can see.
Yes, so that's great. So these are the ZIP code tabulation areas for the regional project. We expect about 26,000 BEED-eligible locations across the eight-county region. Subset of those are obviously in Rappahannock. The colored polygons are the different project areas. So one lesson learned is it is helpful to split these projects up into smaller geographic areas. Not too small, not too big, but they landed on ZIP code tabulation areas. So multiple individual projects in each county. The second lesson learned here is that the BEED Notice of Funding opportunity allows for four years for these construction projects, even though they are significantly smaller. And there's not a whole lot of incentive to commit to anything sooner than three years in the Virginia program. So the max is four years. There's an incentive to show plans for three years, but that's it. That's the timeline. So another big lesson learned. The third lesson learned is that a professional engineering stamp is required for applications. That's not part of the VADI program. But, you know, the need to be able to vet thousands of applications all at the same time, and a PE stamp goes a long way towards justifying that type of investment. We are, we're going to include in our BEED applications all the locations that we shifted from the VADI project and everything else that is BEED-eligible. The minimum requirement is to apply for 95% of the locations in each ZIP code tabulation area. So let's say we apply for 95% of them. The state would look at that application, and if no one applied for the remaining 5%, they go out and they have to, on a case-by-case basis, get an obligation to service to 100% of the locations before they can do anything else with the money. And they have to submit all of that at the same time. So no one can be left behind if you're in the BEED list. Now, the BEED list came out on November 1, and then it was approved by NTIA in December. So if you're on that list, you're going to have an obligation to get broadband to you. There's plenty of information on the DCD website. There's a link here. There's some guidance for localities, the guidance for all kinds of questions. I would say a portion of the application includes a letter of support or endorsement from a locality. Unlike VADI, the application does not go through the public sector. It is directly between an internet service provider and the state broadband office. We are going to ask, formally ask, for the broadband authority in the county to endorse our applications. That can be in the form of a letter or an email up to the broadband authority or the county. We're going to ask for that, and we would need it to submit with our application. We're going to ask that of all of our partner counties. And we'll submit that with the rest of our packet on March 1st. If we go, go down one more slide. So it is an open federal auction process that started in December. There are some limits on what I can say about our bidding strategy. But we are, we are going to apply for locations that are BEED-eligible in the Rappahannock County polygons on the map. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions I can. In summary, we got our risk mitigation plan approved by DCD, switching primarily to underground, taking advantage of this BEED program. Process is underway. We're going to ask for your endorsement on that. And I cannot wait for construction to start. I know that you all cannot wait either, and the folks that depend on broadband. It's an essential utility. And we're doing what we can to bring that here in September.
So in September, beginning in September, you'll have the one cabinet lit up. How long before people will be getting internet service from your company in Rappahannock County?
I wouldn't say simultaneous with that activation, but it'll be within a couple of weeks of that cabinet turning on.
So what month and what year did you take on the responsibility for the eight-county regional initiative of which were a part? What was that start date?
I believe it was late July of 2022.
Okay, and what is your, what is your hard deadline now that?
June of 2026.
Okay, and you said that Mr. Reinhardt visited a site in Augusta County, so that's part of the eight-county region. So it sounds like something's happening there. So between July 2022 and June 2026, for that eight-county agreement, your rough numbers in terms of miles and people that you need to connect, I assume miles would be?
So we are, I believe the mile number now is 1,574.
Okay.
And the locations, I can send you the specifics.
That's all right.
32.
So my question is, it's now January 2025. In that eight-region area, how many customers are receiving All Points Broadband internet service right now?
We have not activated a cabinet yet.
Okay, and so January 2025 to June 2026, you're mobilizing carriers who are, you're predicting are going to accomplish 10 to 20 miles, between 10 and 20 miles a month.
In Rappahannock.
In Rappahannock County. And how many miles of the 1,574 are in Rappahannock County? Roughly.
Yeah, it's probably 130 or 40.
140 miles, okay.
I will send you the specifics.
Okay, so on the minimum end of that range, at 10, you basically come September, October of 2025, you have no choice but to knock out at least 10 miles a month to get our county wired by June 2026.
Yes.
Okay, and can you, can you tell me definitively, so that folks, like the woman who spoke earlier, who talked about all the day-to-day needs she has for internet, can we, can we tell a portion of our citizens that by the end of 2025, some people will have, definitely have All Points Broadband internet service?
Yes, some people will definitely have All Points.
Okay, and how are you going to identify those locations?
So it'll be based on the primary active cabinet. And folks should go to APBFiber.com. They can pre-register for notifications. They email and verify their address, and they will get a notice about 60-ish days in advance for when they can sign up for service.
Okay.
And then the process to sign up is two phases. We'll go out and we will survey their home and their yard, more specifically. And we connect a drop from the cable that we've already built to the outside of their home. And then they pick a time slot for an All Points employee to come in, and they do a two-hour window and install.
Okay. I think it's important, and I've said it before, and I'm glad that you all have come around on this. I'm not saying I convinced you of anything. It sounds like it's an operational decision. But I've said all along that it's hard for us as local representatives to articulate to people in an effective way that there's work going on, because obviously, everyone relates to tangible evidence of progress. And I would encourage you to please, now that you've shifted this model of not flipping the switch on the entire system all at once, to identify, talk about, publicize, communicate specific areas in Rappahannock County that are going to be connected and when they're going to be connected. Because I think the more you do that, the more confidence people will have that you're actually going to deliver on what you promised. And as I mentioned earlier, while no local tax dollars, I appreciate Ms. Smith's point, we did leverage some restricted ARPA money for this project. It's money. While no local tax dollars are in your coffers currently, we have made a commitment, and Mr. Ockery has made a commitment, and the PATH Foundation has made a commitment, and it's nearly $6 million. And increasingly, and I mentioned this to you before the meeting, I see you all losing market share as the months go by to Elon Musk and Starlink in particular. I see you all losing market share as the months go by to Elon Musk and Starlink in particular. Because I know I have constituents who saw the, the, the Starlink subscription price as a barrier to entry, who finally had no choice but to find a way to pay the $600 on the front and the monthly fees. And so I would like for you to equip us with tangible evidence of progress so that we can start telling people, you can hold off on Starlink because we know definitively by this date, this number of people in Rappahannock County will be connected. And more importantly, it would help us all if we knew where specifically in the county you're headed and when. Because all of this, no offense, this, I feel like this is what we talked about two years ago. I understand bead and all of that has changed the landscape. That's inside baseball. What we want to find out now is who's going to be connected when? And it please equip us so that we can tell people with confidence that you're going to deliver on what you promised. And that's all I ask. Just help us communicate in a very specific way to people so that they know when they can expect to see an all points broadband truck in front of their house doing a drop into their, their living room.
Yes, that is a, another lesson learned that we have. So we will share with you based on a polygon of fiber distribution area and the type of communication that we're sending to the residents in that home. And so it changes, you know, from 60 days out to day zero to 60 days after they can sign up. And we can share with you those locations that are, that are getting that. I, I think, I, I believe a portion of the broadband authority went out to the northern neck a while ago and, and saw that happening. I, I assure you that those supervisors and those county administrators felt the same way. And then once the construction started, the, the call has changed to, I think there's too much work going on. And there's too many spools on this road. But until that happens, I 100% understand.
We would welcome that problem.
That would be a great problem to have.
Yeah. Bring in the trucks, bring in the spools and fire. More the better.
Yes.
So Tom, when we looked at that low level design a few months ago, it was, the county has broken up into three fiber service areas. And I believe there was one active cabinet in each area. So is that, does that still your same approach? And now that we're more of a zip code tabulation areas sort of build out zone, is that correct to say? Do you have any inkling of where it might start first? I know you'll, you had mentioned at the DCD meeting that your crews in Foxhure will be consolidating there to accelerate that progress. Will those crews and stuff going to appear or, you know, where, where might we hopefully estimate where the first cabinet would be with up?
I, I will confirm that fiber service area and get back to you. But to the first part of your question, so we designed the network initially to hit, to be able to scale up to more locations that are just in the VADI project. Right? If we're going to be here for 32 years at least, you know, we, we have to build capacity in the mainline fiber and those cabinets to branch out. And so we take all of the addresses in the VGEN database and we design a hypothetical network to all of those. So it happens that most or all of those B locations are in the VGEN database. So we, we have a, a basis and a feasibility level design for those locations already. No one will notice a difference between one ZCTA and another. The, the fiber network i- is designed to kind of be blind to the, those ZCTAs. And a professional engineer will have to certify that the construction and network plan for the ZCTA fits into the rest of the overall network design. So project areas may be different, but they all are going to rely on the, the initial VADI design.
I have some questions along those lines, Margaret Bond. Do you, do you, first, thank you. Doing this work in a comprehensive fashion so that you will be across the entire eight county region, working at various phases on all the counties at one time? Or are they in Suriano where one county has to be at the end of the queue and we're trying to not beat that county?
So there will be times when there's work going on in all counties. But there's a, a ramp up of counties and then a ramp down. But in the, in the, kind of the meat of the program, there's going to be activity in all counties. The benefit there is that we can have master service agreements with, you know, national construction vendors.
I understand. It's just how to manage the workflow.
Yes, ma'am.
And in, in, in keeping with our interest in trying to move the project along, what can we be doing here in Rappahannock County to ensure that you have all of the easements and other rights of way that would, might be outside of VDOT property in order to implement your underground fiber?
Good question. So if we run into any obstacle that we think that the county or the broadband authority has leveraged over, we will get that to you in advance. And
You've looked at the rights of way for the utility lines and determined that for the most part, those easements would allow you to have used aerial fiber. But underground, is it, how do the easements work for that? If they're outside of VDOT rights of way?
Well, we try to avoid being outside of VDOT right of way. But if it is a, a private road and there's no VDOT right of way, then that would be a case for a private easement.
A lot of private roads in the county. Third, do you have any, this is kind of a housekeeping sort of thing. Do you have any proposed language for that endorsement that you talked about that you might share with us? Not that we would agree to adopt it verbatim, but just something so that what we might say if we decide to do that would be the most supportive of what you need to have in your, your reject application.
I can send you something in writing. The short version is the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority, Rappahannock County where supervisors endorses the all points broadband application for the B program. The county understands that this requires an additional local match.
That's two sentences.
It's two sentences.
So that we're, and I think that really does, really does cover my question. So thank you.
Ms. Comer? Do you have any?
Um, not at this moment. You can circle back to me though.
I'll do.
And I'm happy to answer questions afterwards if you come to mind.
Have you secured the land leases for those active cabinets yet and, or passive ones also?
I, I'll double check and follow up.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
With the pivot to in-ground installation, what does that look like? I would imagine it's not, there's that you, I would imagine you have to mark where the fiber is.
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that look like? Cause it will be all over the sides of our roads, correct?
Oh, uh, once the fiber is installed, what is it, what is the, the appearance?
There should be markers. I mean, I've, I've lived in a, in a locality that had in-ground fiber installation. And in that locality, which was funded by Obama stimulus money. After the installation, there were bright orange chains every couple of hundred feet. Is that what we should expect to see or how will you all mark where your lines are? Or do you not mark them?
I, I do know that we mark next to the handholds. It's the kind of the box that goes in the ground where the conduit connects. Let me check with the, the FEED out regulation for marking in a right of way and I'll get back to you. I, I believe in some instances, we put up the markers and, you know, next week they may not be there. But I, I will confirm what the, the actual visual impact is on, on the county. And I know that's.
Pretty important one for us and I appreciate Ms. Smith raising it.
It's a good question.
And we know paint colors too pretty well, so to disguise things.
Anchor locations. How do you decide what's the anchor location? Is that just a, is that kind of a buzzy term for one of your processes? Or is there a definition for that?
Community anchor institution.
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay. So.
You talk fast. I listen slow. I'm sorry.
It's a, a definition. Don't blame me for this. But it is a, there's a couple of categories of community anchor institution for the, the B program. So it is what you would think of as a community anchor institution, like a, a library or, or a hospital or a school or a government building. It also includes nonprofit or even for-profit institutions or organizations that help people get access to broadband. The, the way that the state defines community anchor institution is pretty encompassing. I can, I can send you a list of those with all of the entity names of the community anchor institutions. But it's a, it is a designation that is categorized at the federal level by the Federal Communications Commission. And then each state has their own kind of tweak on, they, they tweak the language a bit to, to make it fit into their program.
I ask because in this county, we have what I would call, I, a one user in particular has been very vocal, Mr. Curry is aware, sort of a medical technology company that really suffers from a lack of connectivity. Is that something, if we compile a listing, can you see if those fit?
I would, I can check if they're on the list.
Okay.
But it, the, the list is out and published and you're either on it or not.
These individuals are served by a wire line provider.
Oh, right. This is also just people who don't have service.
That's a shame.
I think I did send this company an address to you. I think you do, because if you're going to buy them, maybe they'll buy from you from non-grant supported.
And that, actually that, that brings up a really good point. So the, there's a challenge process at the state level to determine which locations should or should not be on this bead eligible list. That happened last November. It was a 30 day window for homeowners or community anchor institutions to say, hey, I should be on this list. Or take me off. I have broadband. Let's not spend taxpayer dollars here. We participated in that on behalf of all of our partner counties. We submitted more than 100,000 different challenges to that program across the state, by far more than any other entity, even in counties where we're not particularly interested in serving. Because we believe in having those maps accurate. And the more accurate the maps are, at the end of the day, the better I look in, in a public meeting. And more importantly, people who need broadband get it. And so if you, if you didn't go through that process in November, you, you can't really get added to the list.
Oh, wow. Okay. So the ship has sailed.
To be in this round of the bead funding, yes.
Okay. Is there any concern with pivoting from VADI to BEAD? And BEAD being a federal program? And us having a change in leadership at the federal level? Is there any concern that the BEAD program will change? And I have heard that there are expectations that the BEAD program will change. And it will loosen and Starlink and programs of that ilk will once again be available under the BEAD umbrella. And that the fi- the fiber to the home will shift back to extraterrestrial satellite, whatever you call it type modules. So is there any expectation or concern that we could shift to a federal program and then experience an issue later?
So a great question. I'll try to answer it as best as I'm qualified to in, in terms of anticipating what's going to happen. But the, the risk for the B program is probably similar to other federal, ongoing federal programs. I think in the case of Virginia, well, so what you mentioned was a more flexibility for wireless or what they call alternative technologies, so fixed wireless, satellite. That is mostly going to impact states further out west with even lower density or states that didn't get an allocation sufficient enough for, you know, their construction needs. And that's, that's different in every state. As far as Virginia is concerned, there are indications that they have enough to satisfy the need for broadband to all the locations or, or enough to not have to change from fiber to satellite. So there is a risk. That flexibility applies more to other states than it would in Virginia. And this program is in flight. I mean, they're, the applications are due in March and the state is going to present its plan in July. I suppose there's always a risk in change in administration, but in Virginia, we're pretty well situated. But that, that is probably going to happen in other states.
I think this is my last question. Thank you for bearing with me. I'm sort of all over the board. The impetus for you joining us this evening is that we have read a lot about our neighboring county, Culpeper County, having an addendum to their contract whereby people that experience a delay in the installation of service to their home receive a discount on their monthly bill of 50% for the duration of the delay of service. Also, if you're delayed six months beyond when you're expected to be installed for six months, you, you would save half off your service. Is that something that you are offering across the board and that we as a county could take advantage of as well?
So the, good question again. The incentives and protocols for missing milestones and timelines is different in every project. The, the rescope with technical assistance from the state broadband office is going to impose some new protocols if we miss milestones in Rappahannock County. It has more to do with our ability to seek reimbursement as opposed to offering discounts.
But Culpeper got it.
Correct.
It just doesn't make us look very good.
Well, the incentive in, in Rappahannock is that if, if we miss those milestones, then we are limited with the, the timing of seeking remittance until we get milestones. And that is if we miss a milestone in another county, it would apply to reimbursement in Rappahannock.
I don't, I don't really understand that there's a difference. I would think that if you miss milestones in other counties, you would also not get paid.
That's not how the incentive program works now. It's all, it's milestones in one county are reimbursed when we hit milestones in that county. But the, the protocols in our extension agreement say if we miss milestones related to activities in other counties, it can delay milestones in a, a different county within the regional project.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is it may have benefited us more to take on this project as an individual county instead of as a multi-party agreement. Because it's being installed in other counties. We're not benefiting from those installations, but we're also not experiencing the opportunity to offer a discount to our constituents who are very patiently waiting for their installations.
I understand. They, they are very patient.
And, and they received, you know, in November of 2023, October, November 2023, they received a, a postcard from you all saying, be assured, we are delivering blazing fast internet service soon, soon.
Yes.
So it would, it would really help along the goodwill lines if there was some way to reconcile how our, our neighbors can experience something and offer something to their constituents. But, but we're not able to do that. I mean, to me, that's the bare minimum.
Okay. I, I I will take that into consideration, share with the team. There are pros and cons to the agreements and protocols in one project versus another. That, that is a reasonable request.
Thank you.
And then in terms of joining the, the regional project, there were incentives for the application scoring to be part of a regional project as opposed to going it, you know, on your own, so to speak.
As a locality, we had to come up not with 2.5, but 5.9 to, I think, or two, instead of 2.4 million, we had to come up with 5.9. Thankfully, Mr. Ocker stepped up and bridged that gap and that was supposed to be. Thankfully, Ms. Rockery stepped up and bridged that gap, and that was supposed to be an advantage, which I understand was in the scoring process. But Ms. Smith makes a really good point. And we're talking about consumer level consumer level accountability, which is ultimately what we're here for and presumably what you all are are about.
Yes.
Tom, thank you for coming today, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I I fully support this and I have from the beginning, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for being so willing to even try to do this. I think what my colleagues have already said, I'm not trying to browbeat you with this because I think you guys have clearly learned a lot of things. But, you know, as a partnership, I think it was sold as a partnership, it sure doesn't feel like that to the constituents. But I hear you saying that you definitely want it to be. And there's a lot of technical things happening that are complicated. It's hard to explain to constituents why Culpeper gets half off and we don't. And I don't know that I'll ever be able to explain that to folks emotionally. Why are they getting a deal we don't? Are we buying anything? No. Well, then what are we doing? You guys, it's complicated. So I think the communication, you're here today and this is great, honest honestly, it's awesome. Thank you for coming. But I think anything that you can do to help me explain to our folks that this is, you know, our money is not just going into a black box into Richmond and then we just kind of hope things happen is is really good. Because then it can, I can inform my constituents. Because there was a little bit of a a hey at the very beginning, this is this is gonna happen. And this is gonna happen fast. And so my question is, is, um, and I feel like you intuitively know this already. The BE money, if approved, how long do you get to have the money before, what's the deadline?
So the the timeline on BEAD is you have up to four years for these ZCTA based projects. I don't expect that to take anywhere close to four years because we, by that time, we will already be under construction. We've already designed that network. Our goal is that at least for the locations that were originally in the BEAD project, they're not going to see much of a difference between their service and a BE location service. But I I believe that the statute is four years from the BE contract. Similar like reimbursement based.
So you if 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 awarded, when would that be? It would be halfway through twenty twenty-five? Ostensibly?
I I think that on the State Broadband's office, the timing for that is TBD. But they they do have to submit their proposal, their plan for deployment and non-deployment on like July twenty-fifth of this year. And and then there's some approval by NTIA. I think they run in parallel some, you know, the contracting process. Probably to avoid the eight months it took to get this project under their contract. But that's a TBD timing on the the DHCD website. But on, I think it's July twenty-fifth, they have to submit their plan, so.
So so I guess the question for me is, since that if we're in risk mitigation and we're moving portions of our county to BEAD, BEAD gets to hang out till twenty twenty-nine, while the money that's covering these other projects, there's a hard deadline.
There's a hard deadline in twenty twenty-six.
So my constituents are gonna ask me, how do we know that we're not gonna get kicked down the road till twenty twenty-nine? And I, right now, do not have an answer for them, I'm not sure that you do.
Yes.
But I'm saying that if the past can be something to tell us about the future, communication, like you being here today, is huge. Because then I can say to people, we had a great conversation, yada, yada, yada. So in July, when this happens and we get it, if it works, I just want there to be communication that this is gonna happen and that we aren't gonna end up, not that we don't want to be a backwater, but that we aren't gonna end up seeing this happen in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight.
Yes, so I would, I'm gonna circle back to Ms. Smith's question about the the risk of this the federal program. So it probably is gonna take some time for NTIA to approve Virginia's plan. But for the the locations that remain in the BEAD project, they are specifically linked to American Rescue Plan Act dollars by location.
Okay.
And the they're they're listed by what's called their broadband serviceable location ID, their BSL ID. And it's a specific point on a map with a Latin long and it is tied to precise federal funding. So that is American Rescue Plan Act, that's the BEAD project. And that is separate from the the BEAD funding, which will have its own link to that broadband serviceable location. When we started this project, all broadband service availability was reported on a census block basis. So Comcast or CenturyLink provided service in one location in a census block, they served them all. And federal funding through like the World Digital Opportunity Fund, that would be awarded on a census block basis, so it was tied to the census block. But now funding is location specific. And I would say that it is is better, right? It's better to be location specific, it's not a hundred percent precise and accurate for every single location. You can look at a map and there may be, you know, one out of five hundred is a hay bale and that's not a house, right? Or it's a a barn or an auxiliary building. But there is a point in a federal database that will be linked to that BEAD funding. So when the state puts up its plan, every single of those one hundred and thirty thousand locations will be listed with their address, the BSL ID and the the exact federal program. So it is much more precise than programs in the past that were based on census block or, you know, polygon. So that is not a very concise answer for your constituents, but they they are doing funding on a location basis for for that same reason, because before it used to be in a census block and it was kind of hard to keep track of what program you were in because they they could overlap, so.
Okay, so you're saying the fact that we've dedicated our ARPA to this is gonna require you guys to get this done by our ARPA deadline?
Yeah, that
State used ARPA money too.
And the state, and so yes, the the state ARPA dollars, and they recognize that there is a risk to some of these projects being completed by twenty twenty-six.
Got it.
And they said, well, technically, our rules for the BEAD program says we can't put up any more money, but we are not giving this back. So last year, the General Assembly allocated through budget language thirty million dollars to be competitively awarded to broadband projects that were potentially at risk of missing the twenty twenty-six deadline to pay for make ready construction or resulting underground construction. So the the state is very incentivized to make sure they do not give back any of this money after twenty twenty-six. That's that's a real deadline.
Well, I mean, it is a real deadline and it isn't a real deadline. We've had deadline extensions for that kind of funding before. It was for, I think, for CARES Act funding, we had a deadline extension.
I I suppose that could happen.
I mean, my opinion is there, this is such a snowball. If we get to twenty twenty-six and the money is not spent, there will be an extension. There's too much money invested in it.
We are operating under the assumption that no extension, we are hitting that timeline.
But you could probably understand why people are skeptical. Right. This is how we're operating. So most of my questions have already been answered. I was I was gonna ask about the permitting issues, if there are things that you could be doing to get ahead now that you're going under underground. And then, of course, I was curious, my ears perked up when you asked for the letter of support. I know that most grants do do need to supply letters of support. I'm curious if you'll be asking, if all of the localities will be issuing this letter of support. And again, you can probably understand why people are are nervous. They're not, we're working on, by the start to finish, what did you say, twenty twenty-two? It's gonna be for four years.
Yes, ma'am.
You also had the benefit of sitting in during one of our meetings when you listened to a number of constituents and residents talk about how much they love our rural area and how they don't wanna see it changed. And one of the ways that we can really, we can help ensure that it won't is by bringing broadband so that they can work, they can shop, they can go to the doctor, they can remove so many barrier. It 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 can help keep them here in the county and keep our county rules. So that is all I have to say really, is that surely you can understand why people are a little skeptical. I was really glad that Mr. Reinhardt went on, we've been calling it his field trip. And and I do trust his his judgment, his opinion, and and he felt better after going and attending that. But not all of our constituents were able to to go certainly. And and I don't think it was that, I don't think what you saw and experienced has been shared in any write-up in the paper or online or anything like that, so.
Not yet, but hopefully that word will get out. That that was, uh, I appreciate those the comments. So for permitting, the the best way to make sure that we are on traffic permitting is open and constant communication with the VDOT residency. We submit applications for permits in a roughly two mile segment. And if we realize that a situation on the ground means a permit needs to be resubmitted, it's it's just a lot of back and forth with the VDOT residency. Every residency is different. I I have made it a a goal of mine, even though I don't do permits, but to have a good relationship with the VDOT residency. Because inevitably, something will happen and we need, you know, back channel communications and we need things escalated or prioritized. So we will do that with our permitting. In terms of a county letter of support or email or endorsement, I understand the the hesitation there, we haven't asked. I don't think we've asked any of our counties yet, but you all happen to be the first one. So we, you know, we expect that to be a discussion point and you all make that decision on your own. It doesn't mean that we are guaranteed to win anything, it's still a competitive process. But we, you know, we are here, we have skin in the game, we know you all have skin in the game. The residents and constituents are waiting for it. And we'd like to continue that partnership through BEAD.
I just had a quick follow-up question, I apologize. Van raised a good question about the the BEAD deadline being extended out into the future. And when I was trying to pin you down on on practical tangible benchmarks for showing progress, you talked about a hundred and forty miles and you talked about ten to twenty miles a month. And I could see that happening, maybe, maybe, under ideal circumstances by your June twenty twenty-six deadline. But now I, now I, I'm having a hard time reconciling that with the idea that there's now a new deadline floating out there related to BEAD. How does that relate to the hundred and forty miles that we already talked about?
We're doing that with or without BEAD.
Okay.
So if we are fortunate to be awarded BEAD, we'll need to submit more permits and have more crews. So the the BEAD deadline and timing does not impact the ongoing BEAD project. So those ten to twenty miles a month, we're doing that regardless of BEAD.
So is is the preference for BEAD because BEAD will mean more money for you to grease the wheels to get the job done faster? That's that's what I'm hearing.
Certainly one way to say it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing. So it means more money for all points broadband is what that means.
More money for the construction crews and to pay for the conduit and the fiber. Again, that it doesn't go to our bottom line. It is for CapEx, it goes out the door to get the construction done.
Is there any change then in how the grant monies are administered? Because we signed up with a VADI program with a VADI administrator for the funds. And you're seeing, are you mixing BEAD in with that in terms of?
So VADI is, VADI is the name of the program.
Right.
It is administered through the Department of Housing and Community Development.
That's still
And that is the same agency and the the Office of Broadband in that agency runs the BEAD program. They're similar. And to most people, well, they couldn't care less which acronym it is. But they're two, they're separate programs, they're similar, and they're run through the Department of Housing and Community Development. VEAD and VADI, sometimes we maybe use it interchangeably with the Office of Broadband, but that is a the name of the program.
So the the administration and the the process for approving payments out of the funds that the Regional Commission has is holding is still the same?
Yes, ma'am. And the the same human beings who run the State Broadband Office for VADI are the same people who are administering BEAD. And it's run through the same state website called CAMS. So it's 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 similar, they've consolidated the process, so not not two different groups.
But there's no local money in BEAD like there is in VADI.
You're welcome to, but no, it's not required.
It's a competitive bidding process by providers
Yes, sir.
on available unserved addresses. And the state's gonna keep going to the providers until they get a taker for every last one.
And they have to do that before July twenty-fifth.
So the BEAD money is covering folks that were not originally in the project. Your APB's bottom line stays the same.
So
Correct.
Well, there may be new locations that are now BEAD eligible, but yes, essentially.
But the BEAD is ostensibly going to not just cover unforeseen costs. It's going towards new unforeseen customers.
It is going to new customers, new locations.
And the definition of broadband of of served changed.
Okay, that's that's what I was
Yes, so when we put the program together, the level of service was twenty-five megabits down, three megabits up. So you could have, you know, copper DSL and probably be served. They quadrupled the definition, so now all of a sudden, people who were served two years ago, now you're unserved. And so that's one change. The second change was they went from census block basis reporting to location. So could have been in a block and now considered served. And now you're in a, on your own, and oh my gosh, now you're unserved. So those are the majority of the locations that are BEAD eligible that, you know, weren't in the BEAD project.
You did explain that before, so thank you for explaining it.
Yeah, but it is
I just, I had to kind of work through it, thanks.
But for for most people, what do you mean the definition of broadband changed? But for the funding purposes.
I see how it fits in with the funding.
But for our for our core citizens who've been dying for high-speed internet, who have had no access to anything, who were part of the the VADI project and identified that deadline will not go beyond June twenty twenty-six period, end of story, right?
That is our project deadline. Yes.
What happens if you don't, what happens if you
So the expenditure of ARPA funds, which will probably get an extension.
The deadline of ARPA funds at the, what the state cares about is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And they don't want anybody close to that, so.
Hannah, how are you feeling about that, Tom? For real, like, I have to ask you this honest question. I have so many people saying to me, it's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen. And I've been saying to people for two years.
Yeah, you're killing
Yes, it is, do you know why it is? There is so much money and there are so many people that want this to happen. Yeah, but APB's never done this before. They have no idea what they're doing, I'm not yelling at you, by the way. This is somebody yelling at me. And and this happens.
I've been told that by
And I defend you guys and I say, I hear you. But I think that there's shared interest that goes beyond just a small project. So I'm just asking you, we're getting to July twenty twenty-six, now we're in August twenty twenty-six, and it's not done. What do we do?
Well, so it is an ambitious project. And we came to Rappahannock and plenty of other counties and we said, we have a plan to get folks who need broadband broadband. And we did the same thing a year or two earlier on the Northern Neck. Uh, we said, hey, I know nobody's done a regional project for broadband before. We think it can be done. We think we can work with, um, you know, electric pole owners in five counties and get everybody to play nicely through a regional commission. Uh, and plenty of people said, no, that is crazy. But, um, now looking back, um, I can say that project is done. And it did not get off on a, on a great start and it was not perfect. And now people out there know that we have made a generational investment and, um, can I tell you how happy I am to not have to submit another monthly report in CAMS? Like, that is done. We are, we're out there and people can sign up. Uh, slightly different, you know, topography situation in Rappahannock County. Uh, I know we have a lot to work on with our undergrounding construction. That presents problems of its, of its own. Our head of construction, our head of engineering come from backgrounds where they did primarily underground. Um, a a reason why they are on the team, uh, and they thought we were crazy trying to do a bunch of aerials. So we have built a, a team of people with that kind of experience. Um, in terms of our, uh, how we fit into a larger portfolio of companies, you know, our primary equity sponsor is a company called Searchlight Capital Partners. They're one of the top investors of fiber to the home construction in the country. We would not be here and doing this and committing to this if they did not believe in it too, and they see this across the country. That, you know, there are risks, there are are unknowns, and we have the the team and the resources and a lot of vendors who are very interested in in helping us solve this problem. Um, you know, they're interested in some of that BEED money as well, but, you know, that's the fact. Like, the the construction cost exceeds the, uh, the amount that a private ISP would invest. Virginia's fortunate to have a billion and a half dollars that they can spend on this. They have to do it. So yes, we're gonna face some obstacles and, um, I would not be here if I was not confident that it, that it could be done. And take that for what it's worth. Um, but that's why I'm here.
Thank you. And and I do know, I just want to say one, I know that you guys make money when you get it done. So I know that there's an incentive to get to the end of this.
Year, yeah, years from now, yes.
Um, when we signed on the agreement in twenty-two, uh, there was nobody else other than All Points. So thank you, because we didn't have any other option. It was a challenge to decide to go with the region versus go it individual with the extra cost and the risk of not being awarded. Um, I think Culpeper tried multiple years and didn't get VODI funds. So we got in and I'm very excited about that. In a lot of research online, you're in at least twenty-two counties in the state with projects on VODI.
Uh, yes, twenty-one or twenty-two.
Yep. Um, so one, I can't expect that we would be, as a state, silly enough, to give you twenty-two counties if the approving people didn't think you had the ability to be successful. The problems that you have run into, everything that I read online was, we need to work together. If we'd have worked together in the beginning, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have had these bumps. And I'm talking about VDOT and I'm talking about, um, Kilmarnick, I think it was. There were areas that basically said if they'd have told us, we'd have gotten in, we could have avoided some bumps. So I think everyone at this table is saying, if there is a way to avoid bumps, once you do get started or right before, please ask, because everybody here wants this to succeed. Every citizen deserves this fiber. So let us be a part of the team, not just part of the region, but when it's Rappahannock County, it's us.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, working backwards. So once construction starts, I, um, we're not gonna come here, you know, twice a year or whatever. Like, we're gonna have monthly meetings at least, um, updates on construction. We'll share that information. And try to get any obstacles that we think that the county can help with or be aware of in advance. Um, and you're right, you know, maybe we were the the only people with a plan, but I, I, at the same time, I know that kind of honeymoon period is is over. In terms of resources statewide, we do have twenty-one counties with VADIE projects in various stages of design, construction, closeout. Um, a big portion of that was on the Northern Neck for us that is winding down. We got two more counties winding down. Further out in the schedule are, you know, Chesterfield and Huraco there earlier in the 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 design phase. And so, you know.
You're in Hanover as well, right?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, in Hanover too. I've drive, drove through Hanover, beautiful part of Hanover today.
It's where I grew up. That's why I'm asking. I still have a lot of family out there.
Uh, it's great. So, um, in terms of applying for BEED and for the state to determine whether or not a specific ISP is capable of, uh, receiving and acting on federal dollars, there is all kinds of information that we have to submit about our company, uh, uh, that that they will use to evaluate that and it and it's up to them.
And it's on CAMS if anybody wants to read it. It's many, many, many pages. So when I did talk to VDOT, they basically said whatever, um, was, you got to work in Culpeper with your contractor team and VDOT and whatever to get Culpeper back moving again. That group was great and they're hoping it'll be the same group when it gets to Rappahannock County. Um, so I just wanted to put a plug in. If if it's working, let's repeat it.
Yes, if it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I believe in the last month or two, we submitted, um, something like a hundred and seventy permits, um, in Culpeper. And obviously those are not gonna be approved all at the same time and and we have a priority there. And we meet with VDOT residency on a, a weekly basis, um, solving problems. I mean, that is a, quite a bit of volume increase, you know? Um, so we want to get ahead of that. Uh, also with VDOT, you know, we're required to have a bond, a statewide bond. So when we do construction, um, if there's damages, you know, they can pull from that bond. We doubled that, uh, to twenty million dollars across the state. It'll be thirty million dollars early, uh, next year. That's another constraint that, you know, we have to put our money where our mouth is and and put down that bond at the VDOT central office. But I'm glad to hear that that the feedback is positive.
Yeah.
Margaret, I think.
Do you anticipate, uh, having, for lack of a third term, for a public relations campaign as you get closer to the actual implementation of the project here in the county? We are anticipating, you know, uh, what do you call it, door hangers and things like that. So that there are things that the county can mobilize to to assist to to do and to get getting the word out. We just need to know what, how you normally handle the, uh, the public relations piece of it.
Yes, so, um, there are some areas where a door hanger makes sense. Um, and some areas where, uh, you know, we would rather us not drive up their driveway and come put something on the door. Um, but we do, we we send mailers letters. If you will pre-register on our website, we will send them emails, um, as we get close to service availability in their area.
But can the county do any part of that? If if you would be uncomfortable going down to the end of some private road, we may be fine, have people here that would go down to the end of that private road if they live there. So we, we are available for some portions of the legwork to do that. I think we would welcome that idea because we, it sort of gets us invested in that, uh, process.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll take you up on that and we'll give you a vest and some, uh, door hangers. A couple of things. So Rappahannock, you all have, uh, a a very good website to keep people up to date. Not every county even has a website about broadband. Uh, and we, you know, each county has a different flavor of how they want to communicate with their their constituents. But we'll ask for help. My my guess is that most of the assistance will come from, we run addresses through a mail database to make sure it's mail matching. And turns out, a lot of people have P O boxes, you know? And that is not, um, always list, that's, that's not listed in a VGEN database. But it would be in, you know, county tax records or or GIS data. And so that is an area that I, about a hundred percent sure we're gonna ask for help, but pretty confident we'll ask for help on that. Because the only address we have is the, you know, the Laton Long and GIS that that is in the state database, which is not the P O box.
We also have the issue with the weekenders that don't necessarily consider this as their voter registration.
The best way to get out of a mailer is to sign up for the email, so.
I follow you all on social media too, and you go do events in communities when you start installations, it looks like as well.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll go and we'll, um, we'll find something. We'll probably ask you all, what is a good community event?
We'll see you at back-to-school night and the Christmas parade and Sperry Fest and, uh, this is a Rappahannock meeting.
First of July.
So we, we try to, um, yes, we support community events. If there is something in the school that is like, uh, STEM-related, uh, we would like to support something like that that, you know, aligns with our brand and our mission. But happy to look at any of those options.
Great. I could suggest another one if you are, have any influence for the contractors who do the work here and they're, um, interested in hiring locally. We have a great, uh, trade program that turns out qualified, isn't it qualified broadband technicians?
Segway into this one other question that I have.
Excellent.
Excuse me?
That would be great.
Okay.
And thank you, Mark, because like I said, it was a great segue into my final question. I'm hearing twenty-one states, twenty-two states. I'm hearing door hangers. And I'm hearing a year and a half to completion. Tell me about your workforce. Like, um, you mentioned crews. Do you have a fully workforce and can they realistically keep up with this deal?
So, uh, workforce, uh, skilled labor for this kind of work is in high demand.
Oh, I know.
So, um, a benefit of having this many miles and this many locations and this volume of equipment and materials to purchase, not not just labor, but the the materials, uh, helps us negotiate volume purchase agreements and master service agreements. The vast majority of the construction is done by third-party contractors. Like, there is no way or reason to have that much staff on hand. So that, the majority of the work is outsourced.
Is contracted out?
Yes, ma'am. And, um, a related question, so this was part of the application process, but I don't know if, you know, remember, but supply chains were pretty snarled when we got started. And a, um, we had to demonstrate evidence that we had support, not only from distributors, but manufacturers of conduit and cable. And so we did that. Uh, but in terms of of labor, that is mostly outsourced. The part of the install that is done in-home is planned to be an All Points broadband employee, but at a certain threshold, that can also be outsourced. But we are, that, that's the, you know, handling, the interaction with the customer, that's the most particular one that we want to handle. But, uh, most of the other work is outsourced, the in in engineering, some of the the permitting. Uh, a lot of that work is done by third-party vendors, because they can scale up quickly. And then we have the customer interaction, you know, billing, accounting, customer support. Those kinds of things are are in-house, but most of this work is outsourced.
Well, I thank you for being here for multiple hours even before we got started. So, um, if there are no other questions, do we need any type of, we don't have anything to?
The only potential action before you would be to endorse the
Letter.
Um, the letter, um, endorsing All Points for the BEED application.
I'll put forward that motion that we, that, um, county administrator issued a letter supporting the BEED application from Rappahannock County along the lines of what was described in this bond and probably will be reflected in our minutes.
And I'd second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is a big pivot and we have had zero opportunity to receive any kind of public feedback about this. We're gonna act on it tonight after we've just heard about it ourselves?
This is a decision that I think we can make tonight.
I think that we will get some feedback about this that I'd be very curious to hear before we adopt it and we don't have a drafted letter in hand to endorse.
Is it the broadband authority making this motion in action?
I think right now it's the broadband authority, because we could do both, but I think we gotta do it separately.
But inasmuch as broadband authority's decision to make right now over this motion and members thereof.
So we have a motion and a second, and we're still in discussion if there's any other discussion.
I'm correct in understanding that this BEED is between you guys and the state through the feds. And we're not signing anything, correct?
Correct.
We're sending a letter saying, yes, we know these guys, they're good.
It could be short and sweet like that, uh, yes. Uh, there's no obligation on behalf of the county. You're not saying that we are, you're not saying anything other than you endorse our application of BEED.
So ultimately, the, a locality or broadband authority could endorse every provider.
Right.
Uh, but this is meant to be a differentiator in the point accumulation for BEED. It's, uh, I think nine point nine percent of however that score is magically considered. So it's a differentiator and so the the body needs to consider, do you want to consider providing a differentiator? It might not make the difference because all companies have an opportunity to bid on these.
Yeah.
One company already will have a significant investment in the community and have a fiber backbone throughout the county. So it's gonna be hard for some others to compete with that, but they're welcome to.
So, Mr. Whitson, sorry, I probably spoke out of turn. Were you meaning this to be a motion for the Board of Supervisors?
Well, I think we have to do it.
Uh, Ms. Bond seconded, so.
Right, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
It has to be sequential, right?
Uh, both bodies can, one body can, doesn't matter. Any body needs, clearly, one at a time.
Yeah.
I remember, if I remember correctly, the BEED areas that are most affected are Indigo Lane, uh, the two thirty-one corridor, areas of Jackson District, and, uh, what are the other areas captured in in BEED?
Uh, not two, th- well, I I can't say, the areas that were not in the VODI polygon, Indigo Lane, not two thirty-one, some areas down, uh, Jackson, and along the fringe of the Comcast area.
Okay. So for those areas, we're talking about twenty twenty-nine? If we're talking about twenty twenty-five awarding and four-year window?
I I think there's some, um, I think, so any provider can bid on this. I don't know if bid's the right word. So I don't think All Points can make certain commitments because it's in the bidding process, in the bidding window. So they can't say certain things. But what what we've been told in the past is that as the VODI project is happening and they're going by certain areas, they're already building the fiber network to cover everybody in the county because that's the thirty-year plan. And so when the BEED project just has to splinter off of that, which is already done, so it's, it's an easy lift. But I don't think they can say a lot of those things.
Uh, those are good talking points that I think I would repeat, yes.
Well, I think that was part of the initial conversation was that as additional opportunities presented themselves to pursue more funding for additional build-outs, you, part of our agreement is that you all would pursue those.
Yes, ma'am. And that, this is one of those.
Okay.
Or or they would pursue them just out of a profit motive for themselves to get more revenue because their line is going by that place anyway.
All right, I'm gonna call for the question. We've got a motion and a second.
Oh, somebody's seconding.
Yep, Ms. Margaret.
This is broadband authority.
Broadband authority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now we should do the same thing for the Board of Supervisors.
If the, both bodies want to have a parallel. Yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll make the identical motion as a member of the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second.
And that's just directing, uh, Mr. Curry to issue a letter endorsing All Point, All Points Broadband.
Um, motion for BEED.
Funding for additional service areas.
Is there any risk in making this pivot?
I don't think this is a pivot. The only, the only thing that is happening now is whether the body is interested in that differentiator from a points perspective in the BEED process. The pivot or the, the, what would you call the risk mitigation plan is behind us. And the region made that decision. So that's done. And so it's, do you want to? So that's done. And so is, do you want to provide that nine point nine percent boost in the points scoring for bead to bring extra bead dollars into the county for fiber to the home through this provider?
That's a federal program.
It won't wear another of the both federal programs because of the ARPA money, but yeah.
That's a very broad interpretation, Gary.
Well, the, all, the terms and conditions in the VADI grant are tailored to the ARPA program because of the ninety-five million in ARPA money that we got.
So we have a motion and a second.
I really don't see this as a pivot, though. This is more money for different uh spec, uh for different uh standards, correct?
So.
It's two things.
Two, it's two things, but the way Mr. Curry explained it was correct. So we, we are taking uh locations that used to be VADI funded. They, they cannot be in VADI programs. We're taking locations that used to be VADI funded. They're gonna be bead funded.
That's done.
That's done. And they are on the bead list.
Is there any interpretation where people could say that you're double dipping?
That is why they are location-based.
Okay.
So um. And then the, the definition change in broadband or locations that were in census block, those are also bead eligible. And they are then uh associated to a ZIP code tabulation area and internet service providers can apply to each ZIP code tabulation area. You get points for how many dollars you ask for. You know, are you gonna pay your employees well? Are you going to? There's other, other point categories. One of the point categories is do you have a letter of support from a locality? Doesn't obligate the, the county to do anything. You're not saying that we are, are perfect and we've hit every single deadline up to this point. You're just saying we support Allpoint's broadband or whomever in the bead program. And we're gonna apply, you know, for that funding. So it's not, yeah, it, it's a letter of endorsement. You're not committing the county to do anything or?
And if we don't do the letter, it doesn't stop you from trying, from doing what you're gonna do.
They've already committed to do it.
Correct. Uh uh I would say though, you know, when we go to uh, I don't want to point any third party. We, we go to a third party that we're having an obstacle with and we ask for county help and we would say, you know, the county supports this bead program. Like, look, they put this letter in, you all need to get your act together and help us too. Um and so it is, yes, it's points. It's also a sign that, you know, we're still in this, we're working together and um so.
We have a motion, we have a second. This is for the board of supervisors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I did wanna make a statement. I didn't realize we were wrapping up a conversation quite that quickly. But there's no way I can in good conscience leave people on two thirty-one hanging and Indigo Lane. And those are the areas that I recollect.
Two thirty-one's good. And Indigo Lane was definitely out of the polygon.
You know, that is just um, that Indigo Lane wasn't part of the original VADI application was just unconscionable to me since it's so centrally located and these people deserve service. Hopefully this will be a program that can deliver it for them.
What service haven't they been getting?
And when we saw the low-level design, that area was covered.
Several of them do have Comcast on Indigo.
A lot of people have Starlink.
Right. But so low-level design did show that area covered, which is, that was basically Allpoint's recognizing they've gotta go through there anyway. They're gonna hit them.
There's just certain points that you can't get to.
Thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Be careful about the deer going.
That would go a long way to mending fences.
I'm glad you're talking.
Giving us the Culpeper discount.
I, I, with you, I will share with the team and.
It would go a long way.
It's for everyone.
All right, um we need to, we're in the broadband authority.
Real quick, you do have a treasurer's report.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
And I just, uh the treasurer, your treasurer provided uh your typical reports, uh show what your balances are. Uh I also did post the most recent report that I emailed out to uh the board and broadband authority that shows the money held in the escrow account. So that, that's attached. There's an open board discussion agenda item for the RCBA as well, if you'd care to have any further open discussion.
Actually, there's one point of uh this uh report that Mark provided. Fantastic. Is that something that can be published or posted?
So a great point of what I noted in um the agenda item for the Allpoint's presentation was that I referenced the broadband authority website, rapbroadband.org, and that following this presentation, it should be updated with the latest information. And uh that definitely should be put to the rapbroadband.org website.
Would go a long way to, to show that there is progress somewhere being made and we are, we are part of that.
But it's, it's been hard to update the other website with not a lot of information. So it's a big chunk of information and a significant change in the timeline. So that needs to get onto that website.
And so we need a motion to approve the finance.
No, no motion. Just there it is. Uh you don't typically approve the finance report. It's just information.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
The broadband.
Broadband authority.
Broadband authority. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mark and Margaret, thanks a lot for hanging out.
We're getting broadband. It's going to happen.
It is.
We're doing it.
Madam Chair.
Happening.
Madam Chair, um that is for mercy and uh since we're contemplating a work session on contractors' yards. And it's late, I was going to ask if we could push the sign ordinance item to that.
Makes a lot of sense. This is the board position to identify a date right now to which you could continue this meeting. Or would you like to leave that into a later coordination process and a special call meeting?
I believe that the chairman is specifically equipped to call a special meeting and I, I endorse her ability to coordinate a suitable date in the near future.
And we typically have the third Monday of the month.
I'm hearing they don't wanna figure this out now.
Yeah.
I, I have some pending appointments for next week, so I don't know that I would be able to make a commitment at this time.
About the twentieth.
What day of the week is that?
It's Monday. It's typically our broadband authority meeting.
It's a holiday. Um I don't care.
It is.
I do care about the holiday a lot, uh but I would be happy to come here in the evening for a meeting.
Good save, Gary.
Yeah.
About the twentieth, gentlemen?
I think I can make that.
Mr. Whitson? Are you in the neighborhood? Are we talking about the twentieth? Twentieth?
Maybe that's, that's a tough week for me.
So it could be, you know, five thirty, six?
Yeah, but I have, I have some um volunteer work that week.
Later or not at all or that week?
I could conceivably have volunteer work every night that evening.
Okay.
The week of the twentieth?
Well, and planning commission on Wednesday. Oh, no. Next, next week's planning commission, sorry. But I could, I could possibly have volunteer work every evening that, that week.
Yeah, um looks like I'm, I've got a family commitment um from four to five PM on the twentieth.
Are you gonna be in the area? So five thirty would work or?
Uh I'll be in Warrenton.
About twenty-seventh.
At Dreams of Dance, to be specific.
Ooh.
Just meet there.
Not for me.
Isn't that next door to C.C.'s Pizza? We could just meet there.
It's, it's next to, yeah.
Mr. Curry just asked about the twenty-seventh.
Oh, that's a different place. That's, trust me.
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, I'm gone.
We have the, our meeting is the week after.
I know.
I can, I might make the twentieth work. Why don't we just go for the?
Let's do the twentieth and say six o'clock here so you can be here.
I think so. Yeah.
Okay, so um what I heard was they're going to pass by on sign ordinances for tonight and the um, a continued meeting
Yeah.
On January twentieth.
Okay, so we're not adjourned.
Correct. Twenty, twenty-five at six PM in this building.
Yes, sir.
So that would require a motion for, by somebody to continue the meeting to January twenty.
We continue to six PM, Rappahannock County Courthouse, the organizational and regular meeting of Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors.
In twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. No opposed? Now, Van?
Certainly not. Thanks.
Nope, nope. We're good. So that'd be sign ordinance and contractor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Work-life balance.
Jeff Henry said, appreciate that. Thank you.